Did I hear that? Cause they want to call and talk. So I was going to give them the numbers. We thought it was okay.
Yeah.
Did I hear that correctly? Cause they want to call and talk. So I was going to give them the numbers. We thought it was okay.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the evidence. But I'll have to go back and listen to it later.
Is that class?
Yes. It's really terrible.
Is that like when you signed up for, when you signed your name that you were in detention, but you actually left?
In a way, yeah. Except in this case, they actually checked.
So it's not one of those, you know, you do the work, you know, you want to read the week as long as you show up again?
Oh, by the way, I hope you don't mind, but I told Rob and she can stay in the control.
Sure. She can stay in the basement. Yeah. Might want to take a few days.
I just, I know. I think I'm used to that. Process that, so don't worry.
Yeah. Yeah.
I'm glad you minded me. Thanks for watching. Oh, yeah, it is. It's a fact.
That's all the time. They might not ask me. And I just, all that's all the time. I thought it was long.
The only reason I finished is I got up to have that. You came up, by the way, working through their workforce and your name with Apple.
Several times. I pretty much guaranteed that when I heard Charlie mention that before.
Never, never leave a meeting, people throw me. Yeah, just saying, we jumped at that opportunity.
I tell you what's funny is that we have the back of the office, Charles can look forward, forward now.
They should, that is, within after time. Correct. It was, yeah. Correct, correct. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Hey, county, county chair, you're up. All those rise for the pledge allegiance?
Pledge allegiance.
United States of America, consider our own, which stands on nation under God, in this world, the liberty and justice of our.
He stepped out, I'm sure he's here.
All right, start with the county?
Yeah.
All right, I'd like to call to order the county commissioners' meeting for October 17th, 2018. Any announcements other than it's being, the meeting is being video and audio recorded? None. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, is there any new business? And seeing none, we'll move on to the approval of minutes and warrants. Take the two together unless someone would like to do otherwise.
I have one comment on the minutes. It was, there was basically said that I was disappointed in the planning for not giving the numbers and I'm disappointed in the staff and planning for not giving it. I don't want to just beat up on the planning board, I could beat up on everybody.
So, anyway.
Staff, yes.
Yeah, that was my intent.
It's fair of you.
Yeah. I've been asking more than the planning department to do it.
Any other comments?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And moving on to official business, this is a request for execution of memorandum of agreement between Richmond, Great Point Development, and County of Nantucket for Old South Road roadway improvements associated with Richmond housing development off Old South Road. There was quite a bit in our packets, I believe Richmond is here, representatives from Richmond are here, I'm not sure if you'd like to say anything? No? Any questions, thoughts from the board?
Not me.
Madam Chairman, just to let the public know what we're doing here, just a tad, there isn't a lot of information in the packet, but back in September, the, you all acting as the select board took up the issue of improvements to public ways that have been required by the planning board as part of the permitting process for the Richmond development. And because the way is actually a county way, the recommendation was that, I think you all endorsed the idea of all of the improvements to be made to public roads since you're the board in charge of roads and then county as well. And at town council's advice, that was to be followed by the development and execution of a memorandum of agreement with Richmond relating to the improvements, who's going to do what, that sort of thing. So that is what is before you to be approved tonight.
Motion to approve.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions, I guess. Is section 1.6, no additional costs, fees or expenses, does that refer just to this agreement or does that refer to anything?
Thanks for that, Mr. Fee. This is Andrew Burek, general counsel for the Richmond Company, Richmond, Great Point Development. The intent of the addition of the language is specific to this agreement, not any other related subject matter.
Okay, great, thank you. And another question, how, how many renditions, how much back and forth was there, what staff was involved with this, et cetera? That's a question for Libby, I think.
There was quite a bit of back and forth, I would say, between town council and Richmond's council. I was involved, planning staff was involved, to the extent that we've reviewed, I mean, I don't know that a lot of staff was involved in the specific wording of this legal document, but there were other staff involved in the review of the improvements. The DPW director was involved, the sewer director was involved, maybe that was a different thing. The housing specialist, I think, was involved a little bit with regard to some of the other requirements of the planning board special permits and the prior MOU that this board signed off on, so I guess I would say we're comfortable with it.
Okay, and those were all, and the other, we asked this question the last time we met, it was in our minutes, those are all complied with, from both sides? We've done everything we're supposed to do, they've done everything?
There are some outstanding regulatory requirements from the November agreement, but they, they simply haven't progressed, not because people didn't do things they were supposed to do, but because that's just where they are in the process, I guess I would say.
That's an accurate statement there, certain matters instantly to be complied with, they simply just aren't ripe for action at this point.
Yes.
For instance, the regulatory agreements for the affordable housing and related matters that need to go before DHCD for counting on the shy list.
Yeah, I would say, and we do have a chart that was finalized within the last couple of days, which we will get out to you all, that summarizes the requirements from that November agreement and where they all stand.
And my favorite question, will we understand what the cost to the town and the cost of, you know, what we've given and what we've gotten before we have to do the negotiations for the other roads, et cetera?
Yes, you will have that in your packet when you have that on your executive session agenda.
Then I can accept this, thank you.
Is there a motion?
I made a motion already.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can I, can I just, just a point of clarification, because I think there's some misconceptions in the community while you guys are here. Can you hear me?
Just getting close.
Just a point of clarification, I feel like there's been some misinformation out there. To date, everything that you've built has nothing to do with the development that includes the affordable housing. Everything's been built on commercial property. Would you mind just stating that for the record?
In terms of building, just to further clarify, you mean the vertical construction you can see from the roadways, that's all unrelated to the housing, but the subdivision roadway infrastructure in the back that's currently ongoing, if you count that as construction or building, that's ongoing at the time, but no units are presently up and occupiable as relates to the affordable housing initiative, the workforce housing initiative.
Thank you.
Moving on, are there any commissioners' reports or comments? None? Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Thank you, Rita. I'd like to call, excuse me, the call, call to order the October 17th, 2018 select board meeting to order. There's no changes to the agenda as far as I know, and we will, while she's talking, is there any public comment here today that's not on the agenda? All right, seeing none, there's no new business, we'll get to announcements in a second. Motion to approve the minutes and payroll warrants and treasury warrants, as so stated in the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, any questions on the pending contracts for our town manager, any thoughts?
None for me, no.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Yeah, my only, the only comment is when you read the airport stuff for $21,000, for $26,000, we are basically saying that we have no control of that property forever, unless we go back to the aeronautics. Whenever we sort of say, let's do this at the airport, let's do ball fields, let's do whatever, we always, they always say, well, that's really hard, and it's because the airport, and we all just, we all read the documents, it's because the airport has to get permission from the aeronautics, and that's, we sign that. So as we just, we all sign something, we just approve something willingly saying that we have to go and get their approval for just about anything. Which is kind of funny when you've given the land to them, you know, a bunch of years ago for free, and we might need some of it back for public purpose to have to go to them, you know, usually they'll give it to you, but it's just, it's interesting that they bother to put it even in a, you know, in a $21,000 gift. So, that's all.
Thank you, Matt. Libby, do you want to go to announcements, or you want me to go right to the select board's reports, comments? Do you need a couple more minutes?
Well, I have a couple here that aren't on the agenda. He can, Andrew can just stand by for a second. There's the one on the agenda about the 2019 annual town meeting warrants currently open for citizen article submittals. Town council was in the town building today, meeting with citizens who have any questions about articles from 2:00 to 4:00, and he will be available tomorrow morning from 9:00 to 11:00 in the town building conference room. Couple additional announcements came in, one from our energy office, there is going to be a community energy program called Heat Smart, helping Nantucket residents save on energy costs all year round. And there's an event this Saturday, October 20th, from 1:00 to 3:00 at Bartlett Farm. There's a question, there's presentations, a Q and A from 1:15 to 2:00, open house, there's refreshments provided. You can recycle your old air conditioning unit, and in return, a $25 donation will be made to Fair Winds, Nantucket Substance Abuse Counseling Center. So if people can make it, you can learn about solar hot water, solar pool heating, all kinds of things like that. Early voting is happening now for the November 6th state election, and it will be occurring in the town building, there are some specific times that it will be occurring, this is all online and posted on, in notices around the town hall. Next week, people probably won't remember this, but it's next week, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, from 8:00 AM to 3:45. Well, that's mostly all day. And Wednesday, though, starting at 10:00. And the following week, same thing, leading up to the election on November 6th. So again, you can early vote next week and the week after, certain hours at the town building. That's it.
Thank you, Libby. All right, moving on to select board reports and comments. First up is the review of potential financial impact regarding a possible sewer fee waiver policy change in connection with Satchem's Path 1 and 2, and possible sewer fee waiver policy change. We had this here, I want to say three weeks ago. Satchem, Satchem Path homeowners were asking for a waiver of the sewer privilege fee, and we kind of got through kind of how that happened, the town, you know, it was kind of on all of our parts. Homeowners didn't really look at their PNS, we didn't issue, the bill's out very fast, and so this, this storm occurred, and we all decided with town council's suggestion, if we were going to waive Satchem's Path sewer privilege fees, then we needed to do it at a higher policy level. And so we have Tucker here to talk to us, he gave us a very nice graph on what that would cost the town, I have some questions on who that would cost, and if the board members have any questions, be good discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tucker Holland, a housing specialist for the town, as you pointed out, I was asked to look at basically the financial impact of the request from Satchem's Path, and if we were to apply a uniform policy going forward that might have anticipated incorporating the request from the Satchem's Path homeowners, homeowners, excuse me, this is what we might project in terms of fiscal impact. So it may be a little hard for the audience to read at this scale, but highlighted in the yellow are the units which would count on the shy list, be under, at 80% AMI or under, and basically would already be included within your existing policy. So the total fiscal impact of your existing policy on what we might call upcoming developments over the next five years would equate to $362,000 in connection fees and 1.144 million in privilege fees if all fees were waived by the board. And again, those would fall under your existing policy. So in order to look at encouraging not only 80% units, but perhaps other income restricted levels, we did an analysis of, or I should say, I did an analysis of the other things that are known out there, as well as plans that organizations like Housing Nantucket or Habitat for Humanity or the Affordable Housing Trust Fund may have, and we put in a placeholder as a whole for those groups. And so if we were to consider including other income restricted units, but not necessarily that would go on to the shy list, that would equate to a financial impact of collectively $800,000. 196 being related to the connection fee, 619 being related to the privilege fee.
Thank you for doing those numbers.
Did you go over the income restricted and shy level, the 183 and the?
Yeah, so that is, that, so the, that would be included in the 800 figure, those are units, basically what that means is units that are restricted and included in a rental project. So they would be, they actually would count toward the shy list, and they are income restricted. So an example of that would be six fairgrounds, the income restricted units in six fairgrounds.
But are they, are they restricted at some number higher than 80, or are they in the 80, or?
Yes, if you, if you could scroll up a little, Erica, the orange line there, those are restricted at 120% AMI.
The 183? Oh, I see, the 120, so the, so the 120 and the other, so they're all at 120? You don't have any at, there's nothing between 80 and 120, and there's nothing above 120?
Not in that project.
Not in this?
And not in the whole chart.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, did you do any projections of other projects? This is $6,300 a unit subsidy, and you're suggesting all units in this, these tiers get the same? You're not tiering it at all, you're saying all different units get this, is what your recommendation is?
Well, I'm, I've taken the request from Satchem's Path and said, if we were to consider amending the policy in order to, let's say, make those units eligible in the context of, we want to promote more than just 80% units, we want to promote other income levels, but restricted, this is, this includes what we know today. So sort of what we know today would include six fairgrounds, the Richmond project that we just talked about, Surfside Crossing is included here as it currently is being proposed, who knows how that may end up, but we've put something in there just as a placeholder, if you will. And then based on information provided by Housing Nantucket, the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, and Habitat for Humanity, you can see just above the totals, we're anticipating 100 units across those organizations, some shy eligible, some income restricted, but not shy eligible.
If I'm, and if I, am I reading this correctly? Like, say, under Surfside Crossing, for ownership, market rate, not shy eligible? This, we're, you're saying we would waive those as well?
No, I'm not. Anything in white on there, you would not waive.
You're not waiving, okay, so those are not?
So if you go to the bottom, I just wanted to give you an idea of what are the market rates that you would be collecting on, and somewhat ironically, it's almost identical, it's one unit difference.
Yeah.
So I don't think Tucker's recommending this, he's just, no, if we were to cover Satchem's Path and apply it to everything?
Okay, that's what I'm asking, okay.
I think I just want to make that point, he was just take, we asked him to take the Satchem's Path and extrapolate it, this isn't coming as a recommendation from town administration? Okay. Can you just go again, what is AMI, and what would be 80, 100, and 120, and 150%?
In round numbers, the area median income for Nantucket, a family of four, is $99,500 or $100,000, and so you can, in rough numbers, 120, 120,000 a year would be 120, 80% is actually, it's not a straight line calculation, it's more like 77,500.
Okay, so order magnitude, it's 80,000, 100,000, 120,000, and 150,000?
That's correct.
Okay.
Rita?
Yep. Tucker, I just had a question about, in a 40B, are the sewer privilege fees always a burden of the homeowner, or are they ever absorbed by the developer?
I think it was unusual that the developer, in the case of, like, the friendly 40B that Satchem's Path is, would request the connection fee waiver and not the privilege fee waiver. I mean, I, I think that's unusual, but maybe not unheard of.
In a project like Beach Plum, the owners of the affordable units, would they, they were responsible for this, or privilege fees?
No, my understanding with Beach Plum is that was all incorporated into the pricing to the, to the, to the buyer.
I believe those were waived in lieu of a contribution to some sewer improvements.
But there was no, there was nothing that the homeowner paid post-closing on their home?
So if we did something like this, then do we lose the opportunity to use that as an, as negotiation essentially for something else from the developer? If we just said we would waive these, then that scenario wouldn't happen, or could it still happen?
Well, my, John maybe, to say, but it isn't that you, it's automatic in every case, your policy gives you the authority to do it, but?
Right now, our policy says that the shy, right now, our policy says that the shy eligible units are waived.
Always.
Well, they have to request it, but that's already our policy.
Right.
So this wouldn't be a change to that, this would only be, in addition, at our discretion, if that, how this is written, if they restrict permanently things at like 100, 120, 150. But that's, it's still, there's still some discretion.
Okay.
So are those, so the other, so the non-80, the ones, they're not permanently restricted?
If they're not permanently restricted, I don't think we should be waiving anything.
I'm just asking, you said, are they permanent restricted?
Yes.
Now, everything in Satchem's Path, even at the 120, is permanently restricted?
Yes.
So I'm confused, I thought you said that if it's permanently restricted and it's on the shy list, we would automatically, based on our current policy, waive those fees?
I'm saying things above 80 would not automatically be waived.
80 and below is already on our policy.
But permanently restricted.
No, it's, so, right, I guess I misunderstood, I thought you said the 120 and the 150 would be within our policy now, currently it's just 80 and below, okay.
Other point on Beach Plum is they, the, we got the, the numbers, I think it was million two or something from David, that was spent upgrading the town's, the town sewer down to the corner here, all the way from Beach Plum. That far exceeded what would have been collected in privilege fees. So, so in that case, the town benefited much further than the privilege fees and the connection fees would have provided. So in fact, that was paid. The one thing I'll say about Satchems is that they were subsidized by the town at a very, very high rate. They, we were subsidized free land, and the amount of money the town put into that project is probably higher than the average cost when they, when people look at these projects. It was at a very high rate. So, you know, I've got a buddy who does it, and he says, hey, per unit it's X, and I'm like, well, we subsidize free land plus more than X. You know, and some of that's a Nantucket factor, and some of it's just the way the project was handled, performed, however you want to say. So I think there is a difference. The other point, I think, is if we continue to do, you know, the more we do this, the wave this, the more this becomes a de facto policy. So, you know, that, so, you know, I'm happy with these numbers, but I, you know, one of the things we should be thinking about, about policy-wise and big picture is, what is this going to do to the future? And in every, you know, every million dollars we don't collect here is a million dollars that, you know, that could be going to other housing. So if we, you know, if we don't collect a million dollars here, a million dollars
Now, everything in Satchem's Path, even at the 120, is permanently restricted?
Yes.
So I'm confused, I thought you said that if it's permanently restricted and it's on the shy list, we would automatically, based on our current policy, waive those fees?
Yes. I'm saying things above 80 would not automatically be waived.
80 and below is already on our policy.
But permanently restricted.
No, it's, so, right, I guess, I misunderstood, I thought you said the 120 and the 150 would be within our policy now, currently it's just 80 and below, okay.
Other point on Beach Plum is they, the, we got the, the numbers, I think it was million two or something from David, that was spent upgrading the town's, the town's sewer down to the corner here, all the way from Beach Plum. That far exceeded what would have been collected in privilege fees. So, so in that case, the town benefited much further than the privilege fees and the connection fees would have provided. So in fact, that was paid. The one thing I'll say about Satchems is that they were subsidized by the town at a very, very high rate. They, we were subsidized free land, and the amount of money the town put into that project is probably higher than the average cost when they, when people look at these projects. It was at a very high rate. So, you know, I've got a buddy who does it, and he says, hey, per unit it's X, and I'm like, well, we subsidize free land plus more than X. You know, and some of that's a Nantucket factor, and some of it's just the way the project was handled, performed, however you want to say. So I think there is a difference. The other point, I think, is if we continue to do, you know, the more we do this, the wave this, the more this becomes a de facto policy. So, you know, that, so, you know, I'm happy with these numbers, but I, you know, one of the things we should be thinking about, about policy-wise and big picture is, what is this going to do to the future? And in every, you know, every million dollars we don't collect here is a million dollars that, you know, that could be going to other housing. So if we, you know, if we don't collect a million dollars here, a million dollars probably takes care of 15 million dollars worth of building if you're amortizing it. You know, a million dollars a year, amortized would pay 15 million dollars worth of something else. So you have to be thinking about it in sort of business terms, and in how, you know, what the impact is, so.
That makes, that makes me think, maybe this is, Brian or Libby can answer this, if, so if we were to go forward with this, and we waive $800,000 over the next five, 10 years, and if all these projects come to fruition, where does that money come from, or where is it taken out of? Does it go to debt? Does it, user fees go up for the sewers? I think we need to understand that.
Yeah, Brian and I spoke about that before the meeting, and he can answer.
Do we have to borrow longer?
No, the borrowing is already done. So essentially, when this was voted for the sewer treatment plan, it was 34% to the tax base, 66% into the sewer enterprise fund, which was split 33% to the, the rate, and then the other percentage was split into the betterments. There's a specific number of anticipated connections that was used to calculate that number of about 15 million dollars. If you waive these, we have no opportunity to get them back, so the sewer rate will just have to, will assume whatever additional money is not able to be collected in the betterment. So it would just eventually, at some point, as we look at the rate, when we start, if we do continue to waive fees, we, the rate would have to assume that, that dollar value. Which, it's already doing in a way right now, because we haven't hit all the betterment, or the sewer privilege fees to be issued, so the rate is already covering it because of the way this was structured. And eventually, it'll catch it, it'll catch up with itself, but waiving fees will just mean that the rate would assume, the sewer user rate would assume that, that difference.
And it goes up incrementally as the projects come along, or?
It goes, well, these would just not be billed, and then we would just eventually, we would get to the point where we've billed everything and the privilege fees except for what was waived, and that's the amount that's automatically will have been paid by the ratepayers all the way through the life of the debt, and then, and then it'll expire.
I have a financial question. We, I think was, I think, Don, you said it was, was it $33 a month was going to be the cost or something, we did that? Did anyone look at what the, the analysis of what the residents here in Satchem's would pay if we don't, if we don't waive their fees, and if we don't waive Richmond's and everybody else? Are they, are we gonna, you know, are we gonna waive these fees, and they're gonna be happy, and then we're gonna turn around and increase the sewer fee over the next 15 or 20 years to cost them even more?
Well...
Has anyone done that analysis?
We haven't looked at it from that perspective, but I can tell you, I mean, we're doing a very comprehensive sewer rate analysis, and the, the likelihood that the rate is going to start to increase at some point, I'm not going to give you a date certain at this point, it is pretty high, given the fact that we have some substantial amount of infrastructure improvements that are being funded through the sewer rate. So I do envision it increasing, I can't give you a time when exactly, I don't envision it in the next year, but it, we're not, you know, we're still working through that.
Jim? When the folks from Satchem's Path came, I think we gave ourselves a deadline to make some kind of revisions and get back to them in the next couple of months, I think. It was either that evening or later, another meeting, we heard from, and this is a question for Libby, we heard from our sewer consultant, engineer from the Shimo project, who I believe was discussing the concept of bundling these two fees and coming up with another fee, and I remember the term, the name of it, and where are we in that, and what impact, from your perspective, Libby, should that have on a, on a discussion now to make a change to our current policy?
It was more bundling the capacity utilization fee and the sewer privilege fee into a new fee called the sewer capacity fee, and it would be approximately the same number as the current privilege fee with an additional amount, depending on the number of bedrooms. But, so, that, I don't think will have much of an impact at all, because it's roughly the same bundled number. And where we are with it, by the way, I'm glad you mentioned, is we actually had a meeting today with the consultant about that, and they are working with town council to develop the language that will need to put into a regulation to actually affect that change. And it's, it's taking a bit of time, because it's not totally straightforward, but we're working through it now and hope to have a hearing with you all before the end of the year.
A question for Tucker, my recollection is that one of the arguments from the Satchem's Path folks was that these fees put an undue economic burden on them. Could you just give us a sense of the cost of the various, maybe Beach Plum versus Satchem's versus some other that you're aware of? The cost of an 80% unit, a 120% unit, between those two developments? I mean, is there a demonstrated, you know, is one higher than the other, that we could, they could argue that the Satchem's Path is, this is more of an economic burden to Satchem's Path, because they paid more than, say, another 40B?
I, I can't quote you the exact price of what the Beach Plum units sold for, I think there are some Satchem's Path homeowners here who might be able to tell you about the pricing on...
I know that, I know that one of them came before you for the closing costs, so do you remember that, that was?
They came before the, the trust fund, yes.
But you don't remember the?
I, I don't remember the specific number.
The Beach Plum would be equal to whatever the 80% units sold for in Satchem's Path, depending on, I mean, year, the years may differ, but they would be at the same income level. But Beach Plum didn't pay, it is very unusual at any closing that this fee would be passed on to the buyer.
Yeah.
And that wasn't, not the case. It's normally something that comes up with the closing, but it was in the, in this case, it was also in the purchase and sale agreement, so it's just, it was different than how I've normally seen it.
I'm wondering, in, with the, sharing some of the concerns Matt has about the, what the real impact is ongoing, if it's something where it's, it's a sort of baby step policy change, where, I think, to me, Satchem's Path is very different in that it is 100% deed restricted and affordable, and I'd be much more comfortable, much more comfortable to have that really be the change to the policy, where when there's a development that is 100% deed restricted, then it is almost de facto that those two fees would be waived, but not necessarily applying it to the rest at this stage. I, I think when it can be absorbed by market rate, I don't feel as compelled to waive anything.
I guess I would take a different perspective. You know, I'm very concerned that we, I mean, we, it's, to be responsible, we need to respond to citizens who come forward, and they made a very cogent argument, but I'm more interested in meeting the needs of folks who didn't come, who may be at home listening or reading about it. I'd certainly like to see something for covenant homes as part of a change of the policy. I did know, and I was surprised, that we did waive the fees for one covenant home, or for a covenant home project in here, which I don't know if that was, so I personally would lobby for that and any kind of a change in our policy. And I would like to see it a little broader.
The revised policy accounts for covenant homes, both on the connection and privilege.
I was just responding to Rita's narrowing of your policy.
Currently, our policy allows the connection fee waiver on covenant homes. I'm really happy with this draft, I think it leaves some, some things up to our discretion. And if this were in place, and then we were talking about Satchem's Path, I would agree with Rita that that's a different animal than most, because every single unit is restricted at an income level, which you're not going to see in most private development situations. That was because it was so heavily subsidized by the town. And if we were able to do another project like that, I would probably be supportive of fee waivers. I think it should be handled differently, and be clear, more clear upfront for everybody. But I, I think that this, this leaves discretion on the project, which we kind of don't have right now. And I think for us and for select boards going forward, it's good to have some level of discretion.
Would we have to have criteria then for how we decide what's at our discretion, in terms of why one project would and another wouldn't?
Well, it's mainly at our discretion over the 80. And, I mean, my rationale for a Satchem's Path would be that it's 100% restricted.
And then it's less of a, you know, we're reacting to one request, more of a broader community, and I, I like that concept.
Was there any look at tiering it and saying, okay, for the 80, we'll waive it, for the, you know, 100, we'll waive X percent? Has anyone done that analysis? Waive partial as you move up the?
We didn't ask for that, so they didn't.
Okay, because that, that would be something that would be good. I think if, if we are going down this path, which I kind of agree if it's 100%, we should be doing that, but we may also want to, the ability to pay is the ability to pay, we may want to tier it. The other point I want to make, correction, slight correction on Libby, if, on the combined fees on that aspect, is, it's sort of off the topic, but I can't let it go, is if, that amount could be substantially different, it depends on how much we charge per bedroom, how much more, and it also depends on how quickly, how we, cost of living increases, what we set that at, because what we're, what we have now is kind of fixed, and this new thing will go up a little bit yearly, and though, you know, as we all know, interest, depending what that interest rate is, what that cost of living rate is, it could be substantial money, which could help the, you know, the existing sewer payers, it could help them substantially. So I, you know, I'm willing to support this if we tier it, if we make it, you know, like what we're talking, and if when we do that analysis, we really make sure that we're protecting the existing sewer users.
So what I'm hearing is we kind of, sorry, go ahead, Don.
Oh, I was just, just going to say one thing about the tiered, I mean, I'm supportive of that idea, when you're dealing with a project that has market rate units that are able to subsidize, because they're obviously subsidizing the 80% more than the others, so.
So what would you suggest?
But when it's 100% restricted, everything's subsidized.
So what would you, what would you suggest as a tier?
I think we would have to analyze it based on the project, but I think that we could tier it, that that's why the policy leaves it all or a portion.
Okay.
For these ones that are over 80. That's when it becomes discretionary, and I, I would say that I...
That's great, I mean, I, you know, I just like to have something that we can take a policy, and people will know what it is, and right now, it's a, and I worry about, I would prefer to have it more defined, whether it's 50% or 75% or...
Well, maybe it's, if it's at 80, it's, it's 100, if it's at 100, it's, it's 75, and if it's at 150, it's 50% waiver.
That's, I don't really care what the tiers are, I just rather, I'd like to see them specified.
I would second that.
I mean, I would, I would add that to the policy.
So, I agree with that.
Unless it's, unless it is completely, in completely restricted development.
And that's also, we would use that, that would be an option, or would we always apply that? That's no longer at our discretion, it's...
We should be consistent.
They're saying it should be clear that someone can read it and just come in and ask for the waiver.
But here, but here's the, here's the other side of that. If, if we, it's one thing if we don't have to subsidize that at all, it's another thing if the town subsidizes it, you know, $200,000 a unit in free land, it's another thing if the town subsidizes it 75,000 a unit in free land. You know, and, and that's the situation, we, so, you can't have, you can't pick, you have to have some discretion, because you can't predict every single thing, and you have to understand, like, how much are we really subsidizing Project X? You know, how, and that's part of, like, that's the difficulty, I think.
And you may have, like, with Tacoma Green, the town is putting up the land, and some of the units are at 30, some of the units are at 60, so it's not that perfect formula. So you probably need some discretion.
But it's also, if you don't have it in there, then you're going to be, there's a potential for inconsistency over time with different boards. I mean, I can think, you know, if the five of us are on this board for generations, then that's fine, but we know that's not going to happen, so, again...
One of both of us are going to be hung this spring, Jim, so...
So I, I, I would like to see some, I'd like to see the, along the tiers that you two mentioned.
So I'm hearing, we, everybody was kind of shaking their heads with tiers, everybody was shaking their heads with, if a development is 100% restricted, then that could be 100% waived, sewer privilege fees.
Yes.
Right, so if that, is that, that's not really in this policy as of right now.
And I wouldn't put it in, if it's that, I would say we more likely to, I would, I would be, I'd be uncomfortable saying, we would, in the policy, I would say we...
About up to.
Yeah, we would be, we would be, we would look upon that more favorably, however we want to write that in there, is how I would look at it.
And Jim wants it a little more structured, so we...
So I'll make, I'll make a motion that we adopt this policy with the, with the amendment that we give 100% to, you know, 100% to 100% shy list, and that we tier the shy eligible, and as outlined here, at the, at the levels that Don mentioned, the 100...
Sorry, just not necessarily shy eligible, just permanently restricted.
Can you say those tiers again?
Yes.
Oh, well, based on 80, 100, and 150, I said 100% for 80, 75% for 100, 50% for 150, unless the entire development is permanently restricted.
So that's my motion.
Second for discussion.
Yeah, and just to clarify that, if it's 100% permanent restriction, then it's 100% waived.
Sorry, is there a second for discussion?
Oh, sorry, that was, sorry, yes, second.
Okay, so we'll make sure we have the second, okay. Sorry.
No, 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 so, I was doing both.
I have one more.
I have a couple of questions, but...
I'm sure you do.
One is, how, how are you proposing the 120s and that?
I was going to say, to clarify that, because of the, the different brackets, you would have to say that between 80 and 100 is at 75, and between 100 and 150 is at 50.
Or you just do the math.
Or you do the math.
Straight line. Yeah, you do the math.
Yeah. Can we say up to? Do we need to say up to? So you can keep that discretionary?
I, I got it.
This might be town councils.
I just, in my motion, I was trying to have it be defined, so that's why I said the three levels, we can change it, but that's what the motion says.
Right, and I was just...
Do you want it to be a percentage in between, or a flat? It's anywhere in between those two numbers is that percentage? Do you understand what I mean?
I'm com, I'm comfortable with a 50 for anything above 100.
So can I just, can I just clarify this? So it would be, anything up to 80% would be 100% waived, anything between 81% and 100 would be 75% waived, anything between like 101 and 150 would be 50% waived?
Yes.
Unless it was, unless the development was 100% permanently restricted, and then they would all be waived at 100%?
Yes.
And this is for both fees, which may merge into one fee?
Well, the connect, we're talking about the connection and the privilege, not the um...
Capacity.
Not the capacity utilization fee, generally.
Right.
So if we vote this through, is, the policy's changed? Boom, we're done? Or do we want this as a draft and look at, and have Tucker look at the numbers before we ratify it?
I'm comfortable with voting on the motion and implementing it. John?
I think you need to put this on the agenda, I think it needs to be revised, and put it on the agenda for a future, to amend the policy.
We don't have that on the agenda now to amend the policy, I thought we did.
Yeah, I thought that's what this was.
We do, we have possible sewer fee waiver, policy change.
It's, it's, so we're all right.
So first Satchem's Path, we need to put them on a future agenda for the, to finalize their request.
Well, you could do that tonight, too. I, I have trouble sometimes, sort of, with us doing this kind of work here with, you know, off the top of our heads. I, I think that that's not necessarily good government, and not in the interest of the, you know, of the people who elect us sometimes, because, you know, I think it should, I think it should be analyzed and then, and try to poke holes in it. Staff should try to poke holes in it, we should poke holes in it, try to figure out what the unintended consequences are, and then come back with, and then get a recommendation, and then make a vote on it. I get worried, you know, we got ourselves in trouble, or I've got myself, blame me, I've got myself in trouble sometimes when I've approved something, think we understood it, and I didn't. So anyway, that's...
We've been poking holes in it all night.
I understand.
And this was a policy that was drafted by...
No, it's fine, and I'm not...
I'm not sure what else we need to do.
Okay. Well, I would, I would tend to agree with Matt, where I agree with these changes in principle, but I feel a little bit uncomfortable taking a stab at some of the numbers. I feel like Tucker would have a better idea of exactly how those would line up, and ultimately, I want a policy that is clear and consistent, and I'm not exactly sure that's what we're doing. And I think that it could be worded well, the sliding scale or the, the tiers could be possibly done in a way that is more clear and consistent.
I mean, if it helps, like, you know, it'll take less than five minutes to reconfigure the numbers, but with what you've talked... But with what you've talked about, 200,000 of that $800,000 impact is related to S H M's, which still would qualify under the new proposed policy. So you talked about marginally bringing down the rest, which is roughly 600. So you're in, it's an order of magnitude. You're talking about a fiscal impact of $300,000 to $400,000 roughly. But I can get you the exact figures based on the assumptions in here.
Can I just clarify, too, that the application of those tiers is still at our discretion? It wouldn't be de facto. It would just be when we waive it.
Is that correct, John?
Not written.
So I, I would encourage the board to develop a policy that you intend to apply across the board. If you want to introduce some element of discretion, I think you need to think about what the criteria would be for applying a different amount depending upon the project. I just think that's where you get into an issue with potentially arbitrary or capricious. So I would encourage you to spend the time, come up with the policy with the intent that that's what you're, how you're going to apply it. You could always change the policy again in the future. If something comes up that we didn't anticipate, just the way this happened with S H M's path. So that would be my recommendation.
So do you recommend that we take out the first line at its discretion?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Well, if you withdraw your second, I'll withdraw my motion because it seems like there, we've just, with that comment, we've added some other changes we might want to make to the policy that I certainly would like to look at one more time.
Okay.
We just make a motion to put this on next week's agenda with our new draft.
I would second that.
Is it, so second, is that enough time, Libby? Just to quickly do, redo the numbers, rewrite this, poke, like poke the holes in it, think through it?
Yeah, I, I mean, I don't, I don't know how much more holes we're going to poke in it that haven't already occurred tonight.
Okay.
But we can at least rewrite it and have it in front of everyone.
So in addition to the changes in the fees, we're going to delete at its discretion?
Well, may I?
Yes.
The at its discretion is in the existing policy. And I think it's fine to keep, keep that in. But I would, I would.
I thought you just said take it out.
I know, but I didn't, I didn't realize it was, it's already in the policy.
Yeah.
I would just encourage you to apply the policy consistently. Now, that at its discretion language would be to address an extraordinary situation that was completely unanticipated, which hopefully is not going to come up. I would, I would keep that language and then put in the tiered approach with the intent that that's what you, how you're going to apply the policy in the future.
And I, and I like the tiered approach. I think that's great. I think the discretion, I, I think part, I think the criteria on the discretion should be partly based, or almost all based, on how much we've subsidized that actual, you know, that, that actual 100% neighborhood. If we've subsidized it at a very high level, we should be more careful. If we haven't had to subsidize it, we should waive everything. But I think there should be some discretion there because, you know, there's a big difference if we give the land or we don't, or, you know, there's some factors in there. And so I just think if we want to be fair, we have to actually look at everything and be fair.
So you want to make this policy written to where it stops us from being arbitrary? Or doesn't allow us to be arbitrary?
Well, I don't want us to be arbitrary, but I also want us to take into consideration how much the town has subsidized. Like that, like one of the criteria of whether we waive it completely should be how much we've spent there. How much all of us collectively, all the taxpayers and sewer users and everyone else has subsidized that actual project, you know, so.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
So that's why I really asked the question about the various, I don't know this like Tucker and Don do, but what the, what the price of an 80% home is. Because what, what, what I was passionate about was people talking about the, you know, what it's like to not be able to afford a home on Nantucket. And I know, I know, and, you know, in the big picture, it's important that we understand our sub, you know, that how the town subsidizes it. But we're also subsidizing closing costs and other things. So I, you know, if, if, and I think we've, we've, we heard that we were subsidizing perhaps $400,000 per unit.
For S H M's?
For S H M's.
There, it was 270 in cash, plus the land.
Plus the land. So save, I think we, so, so, I mean, that's a lot of money. And if we were gonna, I mean, what, but the still, the people still paid 300 and whatever thousand dollars for their 80% house. I don't know if, I don't know if they should be held hostage to what, you know, how we as a, as a board allocate funds for affordable housing.
Can I ask, so it would be pretty easy tomorrow morning, you can have a rewritten policy based on the tiers you described, with the exception, if you will, if it's 100% restricted and a revised analysis of the numbers, that, that's easy. What I did just hear in terms of what Mr. Fee was bringing up, like that's another criteria which I'm not sure how to handle, or if that's supposed to be part of it.
Go on.
I feel like when we're subsidizing, we're getting more affordable housing. Like with Tacoma Green, it's 80% restricted, am I right?
80% of all units.
80% restricted in some, in some way. And so that, that's when the tiers come in to make sense, that those, with the levels of the subsidy.
Mm-hmm.
Am I making sense? And I mean, S H M's path, yes, we put in a lot of money, but we got an entirely affordable development that's really, really filled a need. I wish we had five more of them to make a real dent in the problem.
I, I actually have, sorry. If you're looking for actual costs of, at the different tiers of like a S H M's place, Eleanor had sent me some numbers. There was an 80% deed that went, sold for 306,000, or 100% AMI that sold for 353, and a 150% that sold for 483. Just, I have the D's right here. I mean, there were, there were just three. Those are three examples.
So the second phase you're saying was?
The second phase was 580 or 570.
Okay.
And for 150% unit, I think the max sale price right now is 693 for Covenant Home, am I right?
Yeah, if you want, if you want to speak, give to come to the mic. Yeah.
Just want to clarify that the, the price range is up of the bedrooms. So one, two, three bedroom houses, the, the price range is totally different. So for three bedroom, the second phase is 578, 600. So it's close to 580. That's for the three bedroom.
What was your name for the record?
My name is Tvetanin Savov, then we'll post it circle.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are we ready to take a vote on the second motion?
What's the motion?
Yeah, what is the motion?
The motion is to bring back a revised draft policy next week.
With any guidance? Just with the guidance on the tiers? Yeah, okay.
Based on your discussions tonight.
But we didn't answer your question on the.
Whether the, how much the public is putting into a project contributes to whether.
I guess would, do others, I mean, either Matt, do you have language to add? Or do others feel strongly about that?
Well, I'm not, I, I think it should be part of the, part of our discretion should be based on that if there's, you know, but.
So we'll try to work on it in the meantime for next week.
But we're going to need a little direction on how to write this thing. If other board members are supportive of the idea of adding some sort of considerations to the discretion issue, would you want to consider something along the lines of the board may in its discretion take, waive the fees as outlined here, but take into consideration such factors as, or, or maybe limit the factors and just say, other public subsidies applied or provided for the project, including closing costs, land, and other fee waivers, something like that.
Some of this, the wording that I think would work actually comes from some of the marijuana things we're going to be talking about later, where I think it would, it would be helpful for applicants for them to know when the board is considering whether or not to waive, these are the things that we would look favorably on. That would give you sort of what you said, but I think the wording or the way they phrase even some of the marijuana host community agreements captures that sense. That's reading system, ah, why I can't, stumbling over my words tonight. I just want it to be as clear as possible, and I thought that the way some of those were worded really gave applicants a clear idea of what to expect when they come to us for a waiver. So I, I agree with Matt on the criteria and the discretion. I think it would be, it would be helpful to have some of those written out. But I don't find it, I don't think it's absolutely essential for next week to decide on this.
Matt, did you like Libby's, the direction she was heading?
Yeah, I think it's fine.
Okay. So.
Could we say something along the lines of, the board has the discretion on any of these projects to sort of review all of the grants, subsidies, public financing that's already been incorporated into the project? Something like that?
Yeah, I like that.
Or how much, how much they're being subsidized by market rate sales as well? Something like that in the, the entire package of the project? Can we craft something like that?
John, David, can you help with that?
I'm thinking. I think maybe the best way to do this would be to add a sentence at the end of the policy that in applying this policy, the select board will take into consideration when exercising its discretion, such factors as the total dollar value of subsidies provided through town grants and the, and, you know, making land available, something to that effect. I think we can certainly craft language dealing with the subsidy issue. I'm not sure if there are other factors that Matt was talking about, or was that the main one?
That's a major one, but we'd get into the weeds if I gave you anymore, so I'm not going to.
Why don't we just try to work that kind of language into the policy? And I can work with Tucker on that in the morning, so that you'll have something next week.
Okay. Any comments before we take a vote?
I would just ask, is, are we still within the timeframe of our commitment to get back to the S H M's path people?
Yes.
Okay, and we're to put both on the agenda, the policy change and the decision on S H M's path, not just the policy?
If they're, if they're ready next week, we'll put it on for the 24th.
Okay.
If not, something happens.
But we're to talk about two items, not just the policy, but S H M's path.
Right, we can do it all in one. Okay, all those a favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is that aye?
It's aye, yep.
That passes unanimously. Thank you. It's good to have discussions on policy for a while versus an hour discussion on restaurant, when they can open and close. All right, just a little, just a little thing for me.
I agree.
Meteor, Jim. So the next one on the list is discussion regarding, there's three little items on here, not so little. Adult use retail marijuana license award criteria. This is continued from August and September. Medical marijuana license award criteria and review of number of licenses, both types available. Mainly, we're going to be looking at criteria tonight. We got a lot, we got a really nice, and I think memo from town council in early, mid, early, mid-September, aligning a lot, a lot of this. This comes from anybody who's listening at home, wondering why we're talking about this again. We waited until special town meeting, until Article Five passed on limitations. It was passed, there was only two adult retail licenses available now for Nantucket. And so we need a criteria to figure out who gets those licenses. And so that's why, that's what we're here to talk about tonight. There's a lot of, I think, good examples in the packet. I think most of the members looked at it. Where do you want to start this discussion? Do you want to put out the criteria that you'd like to see? That's in addition to what the staff reviews, in addition to the HCA? Do you want to talk about where the criteria comes in to play in the whole long process? Just a couple of questions to get us started. Rita, we had a good conversation the other day about this.
I was going to say, I thought Katie's email from today, Katie Lofman's email, gave a very good suggestion about where the criteria would come into play. She gave, I think, what was a good timeframe and timeline of events. I think, although we should clearly discuss that, I think what the criteria are going to be is what I've been thinking about a little bit more and trying to keep in mind our interest in really promoting local.
So was it your take that the criteria comes before the HCAs?
I think that was what I was pointing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And one question that I had was, where does a licensing come into play? At the very end of the, of the process that we passed in Article Four on last Wednesday? And the licensing is more of a basic regulation that we look at annually, like we do liquor licenses, right? Did they, they do what they said they were supposed to do? Do we have to put any penalties? Jim, put your hand up.
Yeah, I was going to say, I'd be happy to do a very quick.
Please, that, that would help.
Sorry of what Katie's writing.
Okay, thank you. Said that would be fun.
So but based on the direction that was provided by Attorney Lockman today in the memo, I, I just wanted to outline for the board the way we see the timeline of the process. So the first thing the, the board would do is develop a, an RFQ, a request for qualifications. And in that document, you would include the criteria, either minimum criteria or, and comparative evaluation criteria. And the board would apply that criteria when, when deciding with whom to execute a host community agreement. So the first step would be the RFQ. Once you got the proposals, you could certainly interview the, the respondents. And then, and all of this could be done by a review committee rather than having the board take the time to do that. Because the ultimate recommendation, of course, would come to the, to the select board. But you would interview those candidates, and then you would evaluate them based upon the criteria that you've already established in the RFQ, okay? And then you would execute a host community agreement with those entities that satisfied the, the criteria, keeping in mind that you have now a limit on the number of adult use recreational establishments that you can, that you can have here in Nantucket, and it's essentially two, okay? The next step is really, and this varies a little bit depending upon where they, they are in the licensing process. But if, if we were starting from scratch, the next step would be they would proceed with their state license. Bearing in mind that they have to have a signed host community agreement, which is, was the first step, before they can, they're eligible for consideration. Once that provisional license is issued, and as Katie explained in her memo, that really is going to have a great amount of the detail as to the project and the conditions and so forth. And so once they have their provisional license, it would really come back then to the question of local zoning approvals. And we know that at town meeting last week, there were some substantial revisions to the zoning bylaw concerning where these facilities can be located and what districts and what are the performance standards. And so that would, they would have to satisfy those requirements, including any zoning approvals that are needed. And then after that is completed, you then would be at the point where the board would be issuing a license, a local license, which is authorized for adult use marijuana establishments. You have a bylaw which will be presumably be approved by the Attorney General, which allows the, the, the board to establish a licensing scheme. And, you know, we would be assisting you in the development of those regulations. But as Jason indicated, those are really going to be the requirements that any establishment will have to meet in order to maintain, like a liquor license. That they'd be issued for one year, they would be renewable, but there would be an opportunity for the, for the board to ensure that they are complying with all the requirements of the, of the regulations and the host community agreement. So that would essentially be the process that we would recommend you follow. So that would essentially be the process that we would recommend you follow.
John, once they have the HCA then, as long as they get through the state process and our local zoning board or, or planning board review, that we wouldn't have any grounds for denying a license. They essentially would.
Well, if you're limited to two.
So what you're suggesting is in the situation where we put out an RFQ for, we had three respondents, we can negotiate HCAs with all of them if they pass our criteria? Or would you put out an RFQ for two?
So you have, you have an adult use marijuana establishment that you've already executed a host community agreement for. So you essentially have another one. I would, what we would recommend is you use this opportunity, the RFQ opportunity to decide who's going to get that second license.
So I.
Or I should say that second HCA.
I'll try again with my question, because I guess what I'm asking is if we put out an RFQ and we get four respondents, we put them through our criteria, we select one to negotiate an HCA with.
Yes.
At that point, as long as they get through the state process and any local permitting process, then the next, the final stage is the license at which point then, so once we have the HCA, it's almost a guarantee of a license.
It's more ministerial, that, that's how I would describe it, that the local license would be more ministerial at that point.
Okay.
But the reason why you want that license is so that you can hold them to the, to their obligations under the HCA and your license requirements. So that, for example, I'll just give you an example, you may want to consider in your regulations that these facilities must remain open year round. So if, if they get through the whole process and you issue that license and they close within nine months, or they, or they're not willing to continue to operate year round, then that might be your grounds not to renew the license. Because it's in your regulations.
John, did you say that should be in the criteria? That should be at the license level you would negotiate that, or?
I think it should be in both.
Okay.
I would recommend it be in the HCA, but it should also be in the regulations. And it's, and the regulations are going to give you the real teeth in terms of enforcement.
That was very helpful, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, John. Don?
Oh, I just started making a list if you want to start talking.
Sure, yeah.
Things that should be in it. I mean, I, I support the idea of an RFQ. I think it's the most fair process to go through. Some of the things that I've been thinking about is that it should be a dual establishment that provides both medical and recreational. Local control would be favorable, local, local members of the corporation.
May I ask a question? This might be getting too detailed, but are you speaking about minimum criteria?
Yes.
Right now?
Minimum criteria for the RFQ. Or I, I mean, I, I guess local control would be advantageous or highly advantageous. Control of a, of a specific property, some criteria potentially to review location proximity to other establishments, financial stability, best practices in growing testing and packaging, best security plan, open year round, recognition that these would be non-transferable, the licenses could not be sold, that if, if a business was sold, they would have to come back and renegotiate a new license. That is what I had so far.
With the non-transferable part, that wouldn't really be in the criteria, that'd be something that we.
I think it should be recognized at all levels, that that's not a market that we're, that we're interested in promoting, is a false market for the value of the license.
Just a thought, sometimes, and probably in this, in RFQs, you have a kind of a preamble. And if, assuming that in, probably in our licensing regulations, we would say that licenses are non-transferable, we could, we could mention it there so that it gets at, at it right up front.
I mean, one way you could do this, one way you, you could do this is sort of on a two-track basis, develop a set of regulations and attach that, those regulations to the RFQ. And so compliance with those regulations would be a minimum criteria at that point. And then you could add, you'd have to decide which ones are minimum and which would be a basis for evaluating competing applications. That, that's just a thought. So that, that, that way, everyone knows going in what the regulations are.
And just a question, the Salem application, which is different because it's a rolling basis, they did have in their application written out, expect these minimum conditions for the HCA. Is that what you're talking about, that in our RFQ?
Yeah, typically what, what you do in an RFQ is you attach your draft contract, which in this case would be the HCA. So you would, you would want to have the form of your HCA attached and the, their ability or their willingness to execute the HCA based upon the form provided would obviously be an important factor in evaluating the proposals.
So the HCA is almost the minimum, almost at the minimum side of all this?
Well, I, I'm not sure I would make that minimum.
Okay.
Because there could, there could be some reasonable tweaks, if you will, to the HCA and you wouldn't want to sort of require everyone to just sign that agreement without any change whatsoever. But it could be a comparative criteria. And so somebody who says, yep, your HCA is fine, I'm willing to sign it tomorrow, that would be, you would rate them very highly on that criteria, as opposed to, and as you know, with past experience, negotiating an HCA can take some time and, and some give and take. So the more someone is willing to say, we accept it, we're ready to sign it, that should be very high on your list of criteria.
Okay. Should the HCAs be similar to the two licenses, or should they be very different? Because it's a different location and it's a different.
Well, I think you went through, I'm sorry, I think you went through a very rigorous process on the first HCA.
Yep.
And I would certainly use that as sort of the starting point for the second license, if you.
Legally, we could have different HCAs.
Well, you could.
For any law.
You could. And, and there's always the possibility that somebody might propose some enhanced benefits to the town that are not in your baseline HCA. And, you know, without getting into too much specifics, that might be another criteria that you would want to look at. Somebody is willing to provide some additional benefits on a totally voluntary basis.
Yeah, other criteria I think would be experience with co-op, co-ops, or if this is, if we're, you know, in the other, so experience with co-op is one, because I think that's something that we heard at town meeting, I've heard from individuals that they would like to be able to sell, you know, to grow at home and sell product here. We have, still have to work that out. So that, that's one point. The other one I think is having the product grown here. I think that, you know, eventually it's going to be allowed to go across the water somehow. And I think, you know, we should be looking strongly at people who are local, are propping up our local economy and the money is staying here. I think a town meeting, they don't think Mr. Limbaugh understood what I was talking about, so.
Can we limit it from being exported if it becomes legal to do that?
Imported.
Exported.
Oh, exported, so in other words, becomes a cash crop that we.
Yeah.
Export, great, import, bad.
Well, no, we, I mean, I'm not sure we want.
I don't like the idea of the Nantucket grown going national.
Right, right.
Might have the perfect climate for growing pot.
Yeah, exactly.
There was a note in the Salem one that did say, even if state or federal regulations change as part of their HCA, that the operator agrees to not deliver home delivery. Basically took two things that are currently not legal and basically had them agree to continue to not do that regardless, so.
Right. And, and a lot of this is going to be decided by future regulations of the Cannabis Control Commission, so it's a little bit hard to, to speculate. I mean, I think, you know, I, I think if you really didn't want Nantucket to become the grow center for the entire Commonwealth, you know, we could consider putting in a provision to that effect. It's all subject, however, to what ultimate regulations are issued by the commission.
We aren't, I don't think you have to worry about us being the grow center, our electricity, we have no land, it's expensive, our electricity is twice as expensive.
No water.
It's a, you don't know what the, you don't know what the brand might, you know.
Yeah, yeah.
So I, so John, can we write a requirement that can, that will trump a state regulation such as home delivery?
No.
We can't. So we can't do what Salem did that said, no matter what the state says, you can't have home delivery?
Well, you're going to have to stay tuned on that one, Jim, because, you know, there's been a lot of press about towns, and I think Salem is even one of them, where they put in an additional, I think it's, if I'm not mistaken, it's a 1% amount of sales that have to be provided in grants to local grant agencies. I think that's in the Salem one.
No, it was 1% for transit and $25,000 to nonprofits.
Okay.
And then they had, and you had to have bike racks.
Yeah.
I'm surprised you're not all of that yet.
So what I'm, what I'm saying is that that's met quite a bit, I mean, those kinds of things have met quite a bit of resistance. And we have to be very, very careful about how we draft the HCA so that it's not in conflict with the regulations, is all I'm saying.
State regulations.
To that, just.
Sorry? Did you mean state regulations? Or you mean?
With the cannabis control regulations, yeah.
And just to sort of demonstrate how Salem has dealt with it so far, is that their very last minimum HCA condition is to the extent that any payments in the HCA are deemed not enforceable or not required, the operator agrees to voluntarily donate or give such payments to the city. So they've tried to.
They've tried.
Okay, and that may not hold water, is what you're thinking.
Well, you know, I'm a big advocate for municipal local control, but, you know, you have to be realistic sometimes.
Yeah.
So just a general kind of maybe policy question or comment to all of us. I know we've talked about, you know, that we are a farming community and we like to propose, to make, be, continue to be a proponent of that. We've talked about co-ops because there are folks that are, you know, would like to come together, I believe, and provide this product. Could, if we made that a requirement, you know, for our one, that might, I mean, if we, we could say, you know, it's got to be, it's got to be, we're looking for a group, it's highly advantageous for a group of local folks to come together to form a co-op to provide this product.
To be a cultivator.
Whatever the terms are. I mean, we, if we felt strongly enough about it, I mean, I think that's worth the conversation with all of us, so. Because I've heard, I've heard that from different people on the board.
I was wondering if, I think this is more of an HCA condition as opposed to a criteria, mainly because of the timing of where we are with cultivators, is that one of the conditions would be that if there is local product available, that they have to have contracts with local growers. So at the moment, we don't have local cultivators that are set up and, we do, but I think some of the groups that we're thinking of, they're not quite there yet. So if these were to open in the future, if the cultivators were to form a cooperative in the future, one of the HCA conditions would be that they are buying whatever products available or that they have contracts with locals. Essentially requiring them to have some element of, I guess what I'm thinking is some of these, these, we don't know how much these cooperatives will be able to actually produce, so it would be hard to say you have to have X percent of your marijuana coming from a cooperative, but is there a way to make sure that whatever is being grown on island, maybe they will be able to produce all of it, I don't, most of it.
Well, because right now, co-ops won't be able to grow anything.
Anything.
Because our zoning restrictions are too tight. So we'd have to do something else at a future town meeting and think through co-ops and zoning and.
Which is why I wouldn't see it being a criteria for now, but more of a condition for the future. When we look at renewals, who is, it's part of the condition that you are buying from a cooperative.
The reality on a renewal, though, is you're not going to not renew. Someone's going to spend $3 million, $4 million, $5 million starting a facility where they're projecting, you know, $4 to $7 to $10 million a year in business, you're going to be hard pressed to stop that later, you know?
But if you've gotten your HCA, and I think that's the problem with renew, renewing any license, but if there are violations, what does that really mean? Because like you said, after that level of investment, how are we really going to not renew? But that part of it is if, you know, there's 10%, 20% coming from a cooperative, if there's someone to buy it, I, I feel like a, a business could adjust to that.
I was just going to comment about that. Wouldn't it be very similar to liquor licenses? People could very well invest that same type of money in an establishment with a liquor license, and if they had certain types of violations, the board could revoke the license subject to a hearing, subject to all of that stuff. And then it would probably go to an appeal to the Cannabis Control Commission or some group they set up to hear appeals of license revocations. Okay. But it would have to be pretty bad, I would imagine.
That's my point, is that it would have to be pretty, a really bad, you know, because they take into, they take proportionality into, into effect. When you, when you're going for something like that, they look at, what does it really cost? Like when someone does something wrong in the building department, they do something wrong with their house, you know, you'd think that, oh, we'll put a stop work on it. They just keep work as fast as they can, because the more they can build wrong, the less likely it is the government's going to overturn it later. So I think the same sort of thing here, you put so much in that you really want to make sure that you, you know, it would have to be very egregious.
It's also something that I imagine where it's sort of, if we've got 30 conditions in the HCA, first year you are violating two, second year you're violating the same two, like it would be accumulative, and if year three, you're still in violation of, like I don't see it, I can't imagine it being, that's it, you're closed this year. But it would be cumulative.
Is there any other criteria that we, people had on their list?
I'd like to incorporate some of the criteria that, this is in the town council's email, which is one blank on me here, in terms of the expectations of, so it's established review criteria, does the applicant have an HCA? Does the applicant have written policies and procedures, plan in place to prevent diversion? Those are, so we're going to, we're going to incorporate all of this?
Yes, I think so, yep. Anything else from the board? So I'm going to go to the public and see if they have any comments on criteria.
You know, it'd be helpful to, for our next time, just to have a list of the criteria so we can, or whatever we're calling these things, so we can kind of, you know, fill in the blanks if there's some other things we think of between now and then, whenever we discuss it again.
Yeah, yeah. Ideally, I'd like to see a, a draft of the criteria slash RFQ connected with a host community agreement, if we need to make any changes, we can, and then try to ratify and finalize that at a future, at a future meeting. And then we can go on the next steps. Any other comments before we go to the, the public on criteria?
Well, I just, one comment, I, yeah, I think we can after, but I think, I think we, like, I think we want to move relatively quickly. I think we have, you know, a couple of people now, one that's, I would say 90% through the process, one that's, you know, 50% or 75, whatever, through the, not quite as far through. I think we should move relatively quickly. I think, you know, if Green Lady's going to be open next summer, you know, we might be remiss if we didn't have someone else, because of the impact we'll have if we don't get them both going. But we'll see. I mean, that's the, you know, we're going to see what happens with that.
Yeah.
And the other part I worry about, when we try to do criteria and we score them, I think there's, I think it, I liked how Salem sort of had a, you know, a general thing, because sometimes there's one aspect that's, that you feel very strongly about. And, and if you get a good, you know, you get, you know, a good attorney or a good grant writer, they're going to answer it the way that gives them the highest score, all of them are going to try to do that. But if you have, you know, something that you know very strongly, you feel very strongly about, you should be able to score that properly, you know? And so sometimes the criteria, sometimes trying to be exact doesn't work, you know? And I'll use just, I'll use the Jetties as an example. We have the criteria on the Jetties, but the group that did the criteria didn't, you know, take into account how much money the Jetties, Jetties was going to take in. Marshall was going to give more money than the group that went in. The group that went in has done a great job and it's been fine, but the group didn't do it and Marshall was gone. And so, you know, so, so I thought, I feel like those criteria failed. I feel like that was a failure because part of it wasn't looked at properly by the people doing it, which was us. So I, you know, so anyway, I think like, that we don't want to be in a situation with this where we're doing the same sort of thing. If we kind of, if the group looks at it and knows, here's the right way, they should be able to go the right way.
But that's why we need to take the time to do the criteria, because what you talked about wasn't in the criteria for that.
Yeah.
Well, the rent, it was, the rent was. Well, the rent, it was, the rent was the rent.
No, no, it doesn't.
Well.
You don't open the financial until you've already reviewed all of the other criteria.
Yeah, but the financial, but no, but you you don't open it, but then the, but the, but you're supposed to give it to the high bidder. You know, based if the criteria is similar, it's well.
That's not how it works.
Well, that's, well, I misunderstood that then because I thought, you know.
It's a Q, not a P, so.
Well, and this is my point about the criteria. Here we are on a different issue where we thought we were clear and it wasn't. Sometimes we give it away to the high bidder and sometimes we give it away to the people with better criteria. So I just think we have to be, you know, we have to figure this out.
It just, it depends on which procurement process you're using. The RFP specifically allows you to choose a proposer based on the evaluation criteria. A bid requires you to take the lowest, most responsive responsible bidder. So they, we very specifically use the RFP process in the Jetties example. And this is an RFQ process, which is slightly different from both of us.
The RFQ process that you're talking about here is very similar to designer selection. When you had someone, when you hired someone to design this building, you don't consider, price is not a consideration, you negotiate that afterwards. But your RFQ lists criteria and you evaluate, you rank the proposals proposals based upon who best meets your criteria. So the key in an RFQ is not just developing the criteria, but is articulating the reasons why you rated, you know, proposal number three as the most advantageous to the town. And so there's some work that goes into that at the end of the process, developing a written explanation as to the basis upon which you decided that proposal was the most advantageous. You're going to do a similar process here.
I just think for me, I mean, it's a, because that whole, you know, the Jetties things was, it was complex. It wasn't something I'd been through before. And I was just a, as a bystander on the board. So I don't know if there's some material we can, Libby can give me to give us to to understood. I just, I know I was, I participated in one of the openings of bids and, you know, one of them, you know, they were a couple, 10 minutes late, so they, their bid was thrown out. So and I don't know if we can have some flexibility in those things.
You can. So the problem.
I know that's a, that was a bid and not a Q, so.
The problem with the Jetties RFP is that the way you had to conduct that evaluation was very strictly regulated under chapter 30B. And and, you know, Dawn is correct. What happens is you open the non-price proposals and you evaluate each of the proposals based upon whether they're highly advantageous, advantageous or not advantageous. And you give specific standards to make that determination. Once you've finished that evaluation and everyone is given a composite rating, then and only then do you open up the price proposals. And 30B says that you can then award, not necessarily to the, in that case, the highest bidder, but you can award to the proposal that is in the best interests of the town, taking into consideration the evaluation criteria and the price. Here, you're not going to be doing it on price. It's going to be strictly qualifications, and that's why it's an RFQ and not an RFP. And because it's not required by law to go through any kind of a particular process, you have a great deal of discretion in determining how you're going to conduct the evaluation. You just can't be arbitrary as a general proposition.
Thank you, John. We can talk about this more, but see, many in the in the public like to talk about this. David, go ahead. If you are associated in any way with one of the applicants, please let us know after you state your name.
My name's David Martin, and I guess the only thing that I've got going on is the Green Lady people offered to buy me a beer after the meeting. That's the only conflicts that I have. Other than that, basically what I do is I'm a cannabis consultant. I help people get through the evaluation of whether cannabis can help them. I help people if it would help them or they, it might help them. I help them decide what type that they should use. There are an amazing variety that they can use, and they all can do different things. I have concerns when you start talking about RFQs and then interviews and then all of this stuff. This has taken, so far, forever to get any place open. I go and I counsel these people and I help them decide what strain, what form, how often. And then the problem is they can't get anything. They have nowhere to go to help them get the the products that they need to deal with sometimes incredibly serious conditions that they're going through. This needs to hurry up for these people. There's needless suffering going on because this is taking so far forever. Please hurry up. There is urgency here. I hate the word recreational marijuana because it's kind of a, it's a terrible word. Even people who don't need it for serious medical conditions can benefit from it in certain ways. It's like calling it medical aspirin versus recreational aspirin. It has a benefit whether you have a medical card or not in certain circumstances, in a lot of circumstances. I guess because I feel a sense of urgency, I would like to see a group who hasn't had a chance to to get this and get it done and get it up and running, have a shot. I don't understand why if everybody who wants to do this brings you all their, their, what is it? HCA material and they're qualified, I don't understand why they can't just be given the the HCA and whoever the first two that are open get to be a dispensary. If you, like has happened before with the original HCA, if you get the HCA and you sit on it strictly, do nothing, and maybe you got it strictly to sell it later on, that's not helping the public. That's not allowing people to to get the products that they need to make them feel better.
So David, would you want to see a sunset clause in there? So if.
I would love to see a sunset clause. I would love to see it. I think the year round clause is important to put in there too.
Okay.
But also, I I would say that a year round clause is important to put in there for both the medical and the recreational. I wouldn't want one or the other to be able to shut down during the winter. I'd I'd love to see both stay open. When we're talking about a ban on export, I, that that would concern me for several different reasons. If we were to grow so much here that there wasn't enough need for it in the dispensaries, then we're creating a glut. And I would be afraid that that would increase the chances of diversion. And that concerns me a lot. I don't, I don't want that in any way, shape or form. So I would worry about that. The other thing is, just from a strictly economic point of view, if you don't allow that, then basically the only outlet that a co-op or a craft grower would have here would be the dispensaries. If the dispensaries either can grow enough for themselves that they don't need it or they don't like the price that the people are charging, then literally those growers would have nowhere to get rid of their product. They'd wind up throwing it in the compost heap or whatever they wind up doing with it, but there would be nowhere for them to sell it. So they would basically eat all of the costs that it, they've gone through to produce that product. So while I can't see Nantucket ever becoming an exporter, I wouldn't want to see that foreclosed because I would worry about all the things that I've just said.
How about importing?
Importing? I would very much like to see it be able to be imported. In my experience, I started going off and there were two places open, two dispensaries open off island. There was Brockton and Salem. And Brockton couldn't keep enough product in-house and they wound up selling like one item and that's all that they had to sell and they were rationing that. So I wouldn't want us to be put in a position where just because our dispensaries or dispensary can't grow enough that they wouldn't have enough product to be able to especially have enough to sell to the medical people. I think that would be terrible, tragic. So if it winds up that they can't grow enough, then then I would say importing would be the way to go. If you're going to put in a provision where they would be required to be buying 20% or whatever of their their product from local growers, then I think you have to kind of keep in in mind that those growers might not be able to grow that much. So they might not be able to live up to whatever percentage that you you put in there. Plus, it takes a long, long time for this stuff. I mean, it takes minimum two months, sometimes five months for it to grow. So it's not like you can just say, hey, poof, we're all stocked up. You know, if these places start running low, then they start rationing. And that's not necessarily the best thing for the public. Some people need a lot of product, much more than other people. And if they can't get enough, that that's not good for their health.
What are, what are the criteria do you think we should be considering? Or not considering?
Well, I guess probably someone who can get it done and get it done fairly rapidly would be a big thing. I would love to see local control. I I spoke at town meeting. I I don't want this to turn into an exception to Nantucket where the big guy, the big conglomerate, the big corporation can come in and just wipe out all the little guys. That to me isn't, isn't what this was designed to be like and and it's just not Nantucket. You know, we kind of try and stay local. We kind of try and keep it unique. And I think that is a strength of Nantucket. Our local people deserve a chance to make the money before we just farm this all out to giant corporations and let them just scrape everything off and ship, ship the the trucks of cash off island. I also, I kind of wonder about the RFQ process. It surprises me that you could now decide to switch to that because you've already got granted one dispensary, their their HCA under one set of rules, and now you're changing and now you're going to require the second one to go through an RFQ where the first one didn't have to. And I'm surprised that that's able to be done without the chance of of giant lawsuits. And as a taxpayer, I'm concerned about that. Another reason I'd like to see this get up and running quickly is because we're losing tax revenue. This could be bringing in piles of tax money to the town that could be used for improving countless things. So I guess that's about all I have to say. I can't think of anything else. Thank you very much for your time.
I think we're in agreement here from what Matt said earlier about being quick about this, but we also need to be thoughtful and do it right. And so we're balancing that. Anybody else from the public like to speak?
My name is PJ Rubin. I'm an attorney here on the island. I have a sole practice and in that capacity, I represent a landlord that has an arrangement with Act Natural. So I I have a question and I want to support also the sunset clause on the timing issue. My concern is that it seems like this process has just stayed open and has, and no determination has been made. So I would just like to get a little bit more clarification on how this process is going to close and at what point it's going to be deemed closed, seeing as that, you know, it's basically right now an open competition for one existing license. And I would like to, you know, again, as I said, support the the, a sunset clause that we can get this process wrapped up and moved on in a timely process. We've had an application, you know, in front of the town for close to five months now. And it seems to me that all of the information in the RFP can be extracted, you know, no matter what those criteria are from the information that's already been provided.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I do agree there is, I said to me, Libby earlier, that a lot of things we were asking has already been, the staff's already viewed and it's already out there. But we need to think through this. So this is where we're at today. RF RFQ processes, not sure. We talked about this today in our agenda meeting, how long this will take. It's a lot of town admin time.
Yeah, with all due to respect to what people are saying about, let's hurry up and get this done, there is a lot to it. We are, if we're going to attach regulations to the RFQ, for example, those have to be developed. And there, I I get that people want to hurry up and start, you know, opening and there's lots of reasons for that. But this is very new to us and many of the other towns that are going through it. And we are trying to get information from them. A lot of them don't have it. A lot of them are having the same conversations we're having. So while we will certainly work diligently and as quickly as we can, let's please not forget, there are a lot of other things that are happening right now that to, that have nothing to do with marijuana, like the budget for next year and the town meeting for next year and the follow-up from the special town meeting.
That's all next year, though.
Yeah, right.
Jim?
So, you know, I, we've been asking town council for a couple of months to get some guidance. And and I think they were, you know, spent a lot of time looking for what other communities were doing. These, the regulations or kind of rolling regulations being developed by the CCC, even what's in our packet today. We know that there were, you know, Katie really had to struggle to find what some other communities are doing. I'd argue that, you know, we're a little ahead, at least, at least on what we can see from what other folks are doing. So this board has spent a lot of time on this matter. It's something we had to learn about individually. I think we're being very expeditious. And I know that probably people may have a difference of opinion about that, but and I think town council's given us great advice and we have to, and you know, we have to, you know, we're making our best efforts, but it's, we're not, I'm personally not going to be swayed by people coming up and saying, we have to do this because it's, it's real important, so. I have some comments later about the border health, but I'll put those under my, related to this, but I'll put those under my selectmen comments.
I would just kind of echo that. I feel like we've been working on this very diligently. I know it feels like the vote statewide passed a long time ago, but we have been waiting on all the state regulations. And we are moving faster than many communities that I know of and doing a lot more work on this, hours of meetings on this. And we also had to see what town meeting wanted to do before we could identify what the next step was. If there was no limitation, we could move forward with HCAs for anyone who met our criteria. Now that we know that there's a limitation to to two, we've already granted one HCA, we have to identify a fair process. And that's why I support the RFQ process because I think it's the most fair way to lay out all of the criteria and get people to respond by a date in certain, which I hope will be, you know, within the next two months, you know, before, before we get to the moratorium, the end of the moratorium.
Rita, any thoughts?
Just that I think the RFQ process will provide some clarity and some timelines as soon as we get the criteria sorted in a draft HCA. I think, again, that whole process is meant to be very clear and hopefully provides the timeframes people are hoping for.
I think with the criteria that town council sent, that Jim referred to, what we've heard tonight, whether it's sunset clauses, you know, the export ban or not, we've gotten, you know, good direction. Is there anything else? I'm sorry, go ahead, Dawn.
Can I just add one thing is, um, I think we have to include something where the facility needs to open within a certain period of time to keep their license.
That would be the sunset clause, correct?
I wasn't sure if you meant sunset clause in terms of when we were, okay.
Yeah, just making sure.
So they can't hold on a license for years to do X, Y, Z.
Yeah, one other question while we have John here that I wanted clarification on was there's, you can guarantee that if one, one or the other of these doesn't get the recreational license, they'll most likely pursue a medical license. And we had some, you know, and my understanding is there's, I'd like you to explain what Katie put about the number of medical that are allowed here.
The three, three medical versus.
Yeah, I just want to, A for the camera and B partly because I was a little, I read it a couple of times and I'm still a little jumbled. So I'll see if you're less jumbled than me.
So as you.
So as you know, uh, it was just last Wednesday night, town meeting voted to limit the number of adult use marijuana licensed establishments to two. And, um, there is another provision, however, in, um, in the law that basically says that if you want to limit the number of any type of marijuana establishment to fewer than the number of medical marijuana treatment centers, you need to do that by a ballot question. So, um, right now, I think it's fair to assume you're going to have two, um, adult use marijuana centers, which means that you could issue HCAs for two, um, medical treatment centers and not be in violation of that provision of the law. The question becomes what happens if the town were to approve three medical HCAs? And, you know, Katie and I, we've talked about this, whether or not, um, that would create a legal issue for the town because of the language that requires the ballot question. I, we think there's strong arguments to be made that, um, the limitation on two, um, adult use centers was, you know, voted in accordance with the same law. And at the time, there was no conflict with this other provision in terms of fewer than the number of, 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 um, medical. So we think there would be a strong argument that you would not have an issue, but if there were an issue, the way you would have to resolve that is either to have a ballot question or to amend your general bylaw that you just passed last week, maybe to allow, for example, three adult use treatment, uh, adult use facilities to match at least the number of medical that you've issued. So it's a bit speculative, Matt. We don't really know if that's even going to be an issue for the town. We're trying to get guidance from the Cannabis Control Commission on how they're going to interpret that provision. So for the time being, I think we can assume that, um, you're going to go forward with the two, the limit of two, and we'll just have to see how the rest shakes out.
So just to, so let's say that we had, we have two recreational and another person comes in and wants a medical, that we have, then we, you're saying we may not be able to give that sole medical one? I, I sort of read it the other way.
Well, you do have discretion as to whether or not to?
On the medical, we have discretion, correct?
Right, so it, it, it's possible to limit the number of medicals by the number of HCAs that you, that you actually agree to. It's same with recreational. You may not want to do that, however. There may be good reason why you want to have three medical. And, um, and there may be a, someone who comes in with a, a proposal that is really terrific and you would like to accommodate it. And then, then we would have to analyze the interplay between having three and the limit on two adult uses. And there are relatively, I say easy fixes. You could amend your bylaw, you could have the ballot question.
Okay. Just go to the ballot.
Yeah, which would be, you know, not the worst thing in the world.
I have another question, John. Um, it's actually two questions. One is whether or not it's appropriate in an RFQ to essentially have a blank line that says, describe any other additional benefits to the town you would provide? Secondly, I'm wondering if there's any way that, um, uh, one of the operators could potentially find a way to support a local cooperative. As in right now, we just have an issue where it doesn't already exist. They need some kind of support to get started. Is there any kind of conflict of interest or is there, is that a potential additional benefit that, uh, an operator could provide?
That they would, um, as part of the HCA, they would support financially the establishment of a grower? Is that what you're asking?
I suppose that could be one way. I'm not quite sure exactly how they could support. I think there are many different ways. What I'm trying to get at is a way to entrench buying local, from a local cooperative into the criteria or the conditions in a way that it's enforceable.
Yeah, so the only thing I would, I would recommend against is a provision that would ask essentially for, um, proposes to bid up the actual financial benefits of the town. I, I wouldn't do that. But certainly if, there may very well be other kinds of benefits. After all, this is a community benefit or a host benefits agreement. So I, I don't see any issue with that RFQ asking them to provide additional benefits that maybe we haven't talked about, but maybe another community where they've done one. And as long as we're not getting involved with that 3% limit, um, I don't see any reason why you couldn't do that.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, yeah, I just thought of one more thing that you might want to consider in your, your criterion or how you evaluate the applicants. At town meeting, we eliminated the odor provision from one of the, the articles and I would strongly advise you to, to pay attention to what the, the applicants plan on doing for odor control. There's a dispensary that I've been to a, a few times called Vermont, um, which is up, I think it's in Quincy. And you drive up to that place and sometimes the, the odors just are so strong, they can knock you over. You know you're in the right place. There's no doubt about that. So you might want to think about looking at that too. Thank you.
I have one more question for the board. When we talk about local control, are we thinking 100% local control or do we have a 50% is considered highly flavorful or a number that we consider to be, is it majority local control?
And what does, what does local control mean? Does that mean they're on the town list? I mean, I don't, you know, what is that? Do you have to live here? Do you have a summer home here? Do you, you visit on the weekends? What's that mean?
And maybe that's, it doesn't have to be answered right now, but that's one of the questions I have is how are we going to define local control?
Why don't we ask town council to come up with some?
Sure.
Language.
I, I have some quick questions on the process of RFQ. So I like everything in little boxes with arrows and what's next. RFQ, it's submitted, it's answered, we review it, and then we decide. HCAs, so that's, that's the three basic steps, right?
No, I, I think it'd be real helpful to actually have a flowchart that had?
That's what, that's what I meant to say, flowchart.
So, uh, you know, where we, where we map the process out.
Erica, Erica did a, a version of that in the packet, but a flowchart.
Yeah, I mean, there's little software projects and some of, you know, programs that people have, so.
And so once they're answered, then we review them here at this, all, all at once. We ask questions, the interview, which is kind of like the select board review. John?
It's pretty specific.
I just want to be clear on this before we shut this agenda item down, where we're going forward.
So I, I, we've sort of glossed over an issue here and that is, do you want to appoint an evaluation committee to basically manage the RFQ process or do you want to do it as the select board?
I, I think we should do it as a select board. Staff has already done all their review, right? I think for now, I mean, I think it should be us. I agree.
Should be you, okay.
Yeah, I agree. Dawn, do you think differently?
I, I think we should appoint a committee. I think it could have two select board members, but I think there should be planning board members or planning staff. I think that there should be police staff, fire staff. I, I think that there are some people with a little bit more professional expertise than we have that might really be to our advantage to review the applications.
I'm not saying, not when it comes to review, I'm talking about right now, we're developing the criteria. I think right now, I think right now it's, you know, it's up to us and I think we should, you know, get input from others, but, um, and then we decide later how it gets evaluated, but.
Well, he's saying decide, you need to decide how you evaluate it, select board or we do this, you have a committee.
Yeah, but it's, it's perfectly fine, as Jim suggested, that, you know, we work with Libby to develop the RFQ with the criteria, bring it back to you. And if you bless it, maybe at that point, you want to think about appointing a committee.
And it might be based on how comfortable we are with the?
Right, right. And that committee would operate, just so everyone's aware, pursuant to the open meeting law.
I would only be for that if it didn't slow this process down. As soon as you add more committees, right, death by committee.
Well, I would, I mean?
Sit down and open them and review them, done and there.
Yeah?
So the way a typical review committee works under, in a, in a procurement is they do all the work and they present you with a recommendation based upon?
I think we're going to have that conversation when we get later on.
That's up to you.
Yeah. Libby, you're looking at me funny. Do you need more direction? Do we need to address anything else?
No, uh, I don't, I mean, unless you want more, what I tried to do in the draft, the very, very preliminary draft is insert some of the questions, some of which came up tonight, and suggest that now we'll work with town council to lay out the criteria as you requested earlier. And it wouldn't, it would be helpful to me to pick a couple of you to help sort of go through that a little bit more.
I'd be happy to.
And get ready for an upcoming meeting where you could have some additional discussion about it and just adopt the RFP, RFQ.
Do you think two weeks is efficient?
Uh, I would hope so.
John?
I'll ask Katie.
Okay.
Yeah, Katie will be doing this.
Okay. So to come back to this board?
Well, why don't we shoot for that?
Okay.
And we'll know in about a week if that'll work.
Cause November 7th.
That's pretty tight.
She's, we're going to get, she's going to get input from other board members, but we'll see. I mean, so let's shoot for November 7th. And that is to adopt it, make any changes?
Or?
Review.
Yeah.
Review it. Yep, maybe adopt. Okay. I just like to have dates before we, before we, we can always change them if we need to.
But I think it'd be helpful to really have a flowchart and, and, you know, in my experience with people, when there's a process, especially a new one, you know, we think this is what the process is, but then, you know, you get a bunch, you get two or three people in the room that have ownership in that, they're like, no, actually this goes over here and this starts over here. And, and I think there would be some benefit to that. And I think some people would be, you know, I think that would be a planning person, a town council person, a, you know, town administration person and I don't know who else, but.
I'll send you the one I did on my whiteboard this weekend. Anything else?
So that's a suggestion? Do you want to, I mean, I don't know if anybody, anybody agrees with me, but that would be my suggestion.
I would agree, absolutely. The flowcharts help.
So I make a motion that we ask a flowchart of this process to be developed by town administration with input from others as they see appropriate?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Four ayes on the flowchart.
Thank you.
Okay, I think that's it for this agenda item. Thank you. Okay, we're moving on to discussion regarding and review of follow-up to October 10, 2018 special town meeting. Do you want to start?
Yep, hang on.
Us with this, Libby?
Yep, hang, hang on, that's all.
Take your time. I have some comments on my thoughts on special town meeting. Should I save that for committee for basic comments? Just overall, it's not on any specific article.
Well, I was, just stand by. What, what I was kind of envisioning here is for me to go through both of the special, the follow-ups sort of admin-wise of both of the specials and then maybe have some comments at the end, cause I have my own comment or suggestion about something. So, uh, let's see, so special town meeting one, there were 16 articles and what I've done on this chart is try to identify what the follow-up is. So articles one and two were zoning bylaw amendments, they both passed. The general standard process with zoning bylaw amendments is that the, the plus department with zoning articles compiles a packet that is given to the town clerk and sent up to the attorney general's office. And then we go from there with educating staff and getting people familiar with what we are changing and all like that. And of course, none of that part happens until, um, the attorney general's actually approved these bylaw amendments. But in some cases, you can at least get ready if it's pretty clear that they're going to be approved. Three, four, and five were also bylaw amendments, all of them relating to marijuana. So the marijuana consumption, um, that was the public consumption bylaw, there was a bit of an amendment to that, that goes up to the AG. We get it approved, coordinate with general code to get it, get the town code updated. And then I'm going to need to coordinate with the applicable depart, applicable departments for some kind of an implementation plan or, uh, education about how we're going to proceed with that. The licensing is something that, again, um, I've got a couple of asterisks here. We need to get the licensing process in place and that is going to take a little bit of time because we'll need to develop regulations. And again, a lot of towns are doing this right now. There are some that have finalized recommendations, recommendations, regulations, many more are in the process of that, and that's going to require some input from a variety of departments, but that's something that would be a follow-up.
Libby, what's that set? Will that, will, will Amy Baxter and the licensing department kind of control that just like liquor and review it and have oversight?
Um, yes, with regard to the issuance of the actual license, once it's like, you know, renewed by you all annually or however?
Yeah.
Many years we decide the license is good for.
I just had a question on that. Uh, maybe this goes back to the flowchart, but I heard someone saying in one of the bids or RFQs that there's language in there that says, uh, you know, I hereby agree to all the regulations pertinent to this the town has, along those lines.
Yeah.
Right?
Cause I was?
Cause then I'm thinking, well, if that's true, we're going to need to develop those regulations.
Right.
Before we develop the criteria and we, and so I think that this, we, you know?
I, I think that's going to delay the process.
Okay.
So I think we can achieve the same result by, um, by drafting the form of the, of the host community agreement, which would have all those requirements in there anyhow. And that they would, we would attach that to the, to the RFQ and we would require anyone who says they, they take no exception to any of the provisions, they would be rated much, well, they would be rated very high. We can, oh, the, the regulations can follow later. The key is to have in the RFQ what the expectations are and that, that those expectations will be in the HCA and the regulations to follow, which could have additional.
So we're asking them to abide by regulations they haven't seen?
No, we're going to ask them to abide by the terms of the draft host community agreement that's attached to the RFQ.
That has in it that you will abide by all the regulations?
Well, that will be a?
That will be developed.
Yeah.
Okay.
Right, well, regulations are regulations. They can have input into how they're drafted or public comment, but that's what they're going to have to do.
That's again, that's kind of why a flowchart would be helpful, because of issues like that.
There's, we were discussing today, there's a lot of chicken egg type things with this whole situation.
The other, the other point, I think what we're being warned against are things like charging extra money because that's a hot topic up in Boston on this entire issue. Some of the other things that we're talking about are pro, are going to run, be under the radar a little more. But if, you know, if it's a money issue, they're, you know, they're arguing about that on a weekly basis. Some of the other things we're talking about probably won't be as, you know, as much of as flashpoint.
Article five was our limitation and that just gets sent to the AG's office. Six and seven, um, and actually several other articles, as you know, we could not act on because we did not have a quorum. Six and seven specifically are debt exclusions, which are all, which require a ballot vote. Debt exclusions require a ballot vote and a town meeting vote. It does not matter which order that is in. And they already, as you know, were put onto the state ballot, so that vote can proceed. And then if the board is so inclined, which I anticipate you would be, we would put those articles onto the annual town meeting.
Have you ever, has this ever happened before? And what happened at the ballot?
Yes, it has happened before because, oh, I don't know about here.
I'm talking about Nantucket electorate. So, you know?
I don't?
Nantucket electric?
Nantucket electorate.
Oh, oh, sorry.
No.
No, I?
Probably, I, I don't, I don't.
But I did, I was asked by, um, Libby and Greg to draft up a, um, public statement to explain to the electorate?
Okay.
What the process is. And I actually did that this afternoon. I doubt Libby has had a chance to look at it, but my thought would be that it, you could announce it at your next couple of selectmen's meetings. You can put it on the website. You, you can, um, you know, you could write a letter. You, you can, you know, you could write a letter to the editor. You just can't spend town funds providing that kind of information on a pending ballot question. So you couldn't send out a mail or to everybody, for example. But you could, in public forums, the website here, you could explain that to the voters.
Yeah, we could explain it in a newsletter, because we're working on that right now. Could we?
Does that newsletter get sent out?
You have to subscribe to it.
Do you spend town funds sending it out?
It's just, it's labor.
Okay, we'll, we'll talk, we'll talk about it.
Okay. Anyway, well, back to what Jim just asked, has this ever happened before? What I don't really recall is that we didn't have a quorum before to act on a financial article.
I remember we had to call people. A couple nights, we've had to call people and ask them to hurry up and get there.
Yeah.
But I don't think, I don't remember that.
There were too many people missing.
It wasn't even close.
Yeah, this one wasn't.
We did talk about maybe doing something for April to lower the quorum requirement.
Yes, I'll get to that in a second. So, so these appropriations, I would anticipate, continue on the ballot and then get put back on the next required vote, which is be the 2019 annual town meeting. Article eight was an appropriation for the new sewer force main design. We're having some internal discussions right now as to whether or not we can somehow use existing funds to at least somehow scrape together a, something of a solid number for, for the construction of the new sewer force main at the annual town meeting, without being too unrealistic about it. More, more on that later. Ten was not, was of no action anyway, the supplemental appropriation for the town pier. Eleven and twelve were the airport appropriations, no, could not take action on those. And, is Tom here? No. He was kind of expressing concern at a department head meeting earlier this week as to those projects, but I guess I'll work it out. There was a bid issue. I think it'll get worked out. Thirteen, I think, was a transfer article, which actually was able to be handled at the town meeting. Fourteen and fifteen could not be handled. Sixteen was the bylaw amendment on the single-use plastics. That will proceed to be sent to the attorney general's office, and I'm gonna wait on whether or not that's approved. And we're gonna need to spend a good amount of time developing a program for implementation on that. Special town meeting two, bylaw, which had the three articles. The first was a bylaw amendment about the coastal properties. That'll get sent to the town, to the attorney general by the town clerk. And I don't think there's too much follow-up, at least at this point, necessary on that. Article two, which is a zoning mat change, did not pass, so no action needed there. Article three was a bylaw amendment regarding the, amending the chapter of conveyance of town property, which had to do with the installation of private sewers in public ways. And that did pass, however, town council has developed a memo that was sent to all of you about that with some concerns as to whether or not that will pass the attorney general's review.
Do you wanna speak to that for the public so they're aware of it?
Certainly.
So we all read the petitioned article, it was on the warrant, and it, it essentially provided that a town board could not grant approval for a private party to enter on town property for the purpose of installing, maintaining, or operating a sewer. At town meeting, the main motion was revised, and the word installing was taking, taken out. So that when it, as passed by town meeting, it requires town meeting approval for a board to grant permission for someone to maintain and operate a sewer line on town property. And that change actually winds up making a huge difference in, difference in the way this bylaw is going to be applied. As I said in my memo, the, the select board has adopted a sanitary sewer policy. And you've applied that policy in a couple of instances that I'm aware of, where if a developer wants to extend sewers down a public way, for example, they, they come to the select board, they offer that to incur all of the cost. And the select board gives them permission to access the road to install the sewer. It has to be done in accordance with town standards. It has to be inspected and accepted by the DPW, or the sewer department, I should say. And then and only then does it, do the selectmen accept the sewer line and dedicate that line as a public sewer. That's your policy, and this bylaw would not affect the ability of the board to, to continue to carry out that policy. So, yes.
So I just had some questions. So it said, took out, took out install and kept in maintain and operate?
Yes.
Okay, so how could, how could we install it and then not operate it?
No, so the developer would install the sewer.
Right.
It would then be accepted as a town sewer, and the town would maintain and operate the sewer.
But that was what the, I thought that's what the bylaws said we couldn't do.
No, the bylaw says you can't give permission to a private party to install, operate, and maintain.
Okay, okay.
So, um, in the vast majority of cases, I don't think that there's any practical effect to this bylaw. The only time that it would come into play is if for some reason a developer or an individual came to the, the board and said, "We want to install a private sewer line on town property, which will remain private." The example that Libby and I talked about was maybe a circumstance where somebody needs to cross a town road or town property because a package, a private package treatment plant is located on a non-contiguous parcel. Then this bylaw says you would need town meeting approval for the board to, to, to do that. However, under that scenario, the town, the, the select board would have to grant an easement in any event. And an easement is subject to town meeting approval already under the general laws, so this bylaw really doesn't add any new requirement. Okay? That's in essence what my memo says.
Any other questions, thoughts on that from the board?
So the only other thing I wanted to mention was, I would suggest that the board consider a bylaw amendment to eliminate or reduce the quorum requirement at special town meetings at the annual. Because if it's going to, you know, potentially impede our business, then... I said that I was requesting that the board consider a bylaw amendment to eliminate or reduce the special town meeting quorum requirement at the annual town meeting.
What, what's the quorum now, was it four?
It's 5% for appropriations, 3% for transfers.
Yeah, so what was the number, four some, four?
It was around 450.
Wow.
And how many is, how many does that, the hall hold? 550, 600?
700-ish.
700?
Yeah, it's over 700.
Yeah, so it's a little more than half, yeah, okay.
I'd have to think about that.
Yeah.
I really don't, and that's why it was my big, you know, bitter taste in my mouth walking away from town meeting, that we didn't have enough people. And at the end, there was 150 people making really big decisions from the article 16 on. And I wasn't disagreeable with how the articles went. That's, people voted on that, that's fine. But not people showing up. So us lowering the quorum is giving incentive for less people to show up. And that bothers me, 8,600 registered voters, soon we'll have 9,000, maybe, maybe 10, hopefully if we get more people registered. And we're saying only 50 people could show up to vote on. It still has to go to the ballot, I get that.
I think, I don't know, but sometimes people have a higher expectation for town, for a special, to avoid, you know, having small numbers of people who tend to come out for a special, make, you know, make decisions on high capital projects. So I know in the past, we've said, well, we really need to take this to the annual town meeting, because it really needs, you know, the opportunity for the largest, because we know fewer people come to specials. And, and, you know, we need to bring, bring this to the annual town meeting and not have it at a special for that reason.
Nice question, if, if 600 people show up and it goes under 450 at 8 o'clock when financial articles come up, are, can they still be passed? Is somebody counting who's walking in and out? Or once we hit quorum, we're good?
Well, once you hit the quorum, you can continue on regardless of who's in the room, unless someone calls for, to, to question the quorum.
Okay.
And that can only be done prior to voting. I should defer to the moderator, because she's in the room. But you couldn't call the, a point of no quorum while the voting was taking place. But anytime prior to the vote, anyone can raise a point of no quorum.
Okay.
In which case you would, the moderator would take account. And if you'd fallen below the 450, then obviously you couldn't act.
Right.
But if the, if nobody questions the quorum and it passed, I often get this question, "Well, the vote was 150 to 50, that's only 200 people, clearly you didn't have a quorum." Well, that doesn't really hold true, because a lot of people could have simply just abstained.
They abstained by leaving the, leaving the room, right? I think, just a comment, more and more, and I think we saw it, you know, when I was on the finance committee, we've become a lot of one-issue, we've got a lot of one-issue voters. And I know when the, you know, when the, when town meeting overrode the finance committee's recommendation on the, on the settlement of a CBA for the airport, at least a third of the room got up and left after that article.
It's unfortunate to see so few people.
That's why we should pull them randomly and make them stay all night.
Sometimes do that.
I know, I've suggested it.
Do they?
Yeah, you just pull them out of a, pull them out of a hat.
Oh, the articles?
Yeah, you pull them out of the hat and no one can sit and time it, yeah.
Does it, Pat, I'll get to you in a second, Pat. Does it make sense to relook at having a system where people can push a button if they're in their seat? And I was always kind of against that, because it's 100 grand. And I know Sarah, the moderator, looked at this before. It's expensive, technology isn't great, but would more people come out because they don't have to do this in front of everyone? Is that, I, I like that, I like everybody seeing how I'm voting.
I don't think we have a lot of shy people who live on this island, so...
Well, it's something I've heard more of in the last
People wouldn't...
year than I've heard before. I don't know, Libby, what are you?
I'm, I'm not really sure. One benefit of that is the accuracy in numbers.
Yeah.
But the, I, I didn't, I, I readily admit, I did not do a lot of research on electronic voting, but the one vendor that I have spoken to had, their, their setup was just not very conducive to our town meeting. They had like tablets, 50 or so tablets that you bring to town meeting and you have to come down to the front.
You and I interviewed that person at the, at the MMA.
That's right.
And they're, it's not ready for prime time.
It sounded cumbersome and...
Yeah.
Maybe it is, yes. Pat, I'll get to you in a second.
So I've attended two town meetings where there's electronic voting. One was a representative town meeting, which I think it works really well. But also the town of Eastham does electronic voting, and I've been to several of their town meetings now. And I think it's fair to say that if you talk to the Eastham people, they would tell you that it works very, very well.
Everybody has a clicker.
Everybody gets a clicker, and, and then the, the results are displayed on a computer screen. At a representative town meeting, the names are listed, but obviously you, you don't do that with an open town meeting.
So, go ahead.
So, I, I would, if you're interested in pursuing that, you might want to talk to the Eastham people. I don't know which vendor they used, I don't know if it's the same one that, that you spoke to. But my, my experience has been that it, it works pretty well to speed up town meeting and accuracy.
Speed up town meeting would be nice. Yeah. Yeah, please. I was hoping you were gonna speak on this, Sarah.
So Sarah Alger, I actually went to Eastham and saw a town meeting a couple of years ago and talked to their vendor. It worked really well. It costs about $30,000 a night. We talked to them about coming here. We would have to change, at that point anyway, it may have changed since then, but at that time, we would have had to change when we had our town meeting to use them, because they already have towns lined up for those particular times. And so they were trying to push us further into the spring or further back into the winter, neither one of which anyone was all that excited about doing. It is a little bit more expensive to bring them here, because we also have to put them up. But it does work really well, and I sat through the meeting and it, it went very smoothly. The meeting immediately after that, that we had here, we didn't have one hand count. And the voice votes are much faster than the, than the voting by clicker.
Really?
Yeah, but the voting by clicker, yeah, because you say, every, there's a thing where you say, "Everyone be prepared to vote. Voting's now open, it's 30 seconds while people are voting." Then it tallies, then it shows up, then you announce the vote. So it's a little slower than a voice vote, but it's a lot faster and a lot more accurate than the hand click, you know, the person going around clicking. And it's certainly faster than if we ever had to do a paper ballot. So, I, just for my own personal self, would love to do a meeting with clickers and see how it goes. But I don't think that's the reason to do it, just because I think it would be fun to try it.
Is it, is it proprietary equipment of theirs, do they own it, or is it...
You can buy it, but it becomes, it's expensive to buy, and then it becomes obsolete very quickly. So there's a benefit, and there's a whole, they have a whole bank of, of computers that they're running, you know, probably 10 servers running the whole time. And they've got people checking the things, and they don't always work, so people are always coming up. And, and there's a little bit of enforcement stuff, like you have to make sure that people aren't coming in, getting a clicker, then handing it to their neighbor and going home, so that you have someone up in the back, you know, with a bank of things. You know, voting as if they were voting quite proxy.
We can guess who that might be, but...
I do, well. So, I mean, it's definitely intriguing, and if you're interested, you know, going to one of these meetings and seeing how it works. Or they would actually come here and do a demonstration if we wanted it.
I think that makes sense.
Yeah, anyway, I'm, I'm very open to trying it and to doing anything you guys think would make sense, so let me know.
Thank you.
I would also say they don't, procedural votes, they don't do by clicker. You can limit it to the amendments and amendments.
Right.
Do you have something on the click, on the town meeting?
There is, there is yet another way to take the count, which not, which I haven't seen here in the 20 years I've been on the island. And nobody likes it, but it does work very well. And I just would like you to have it in the back of your mind to know that it's possible. It's called division of the house. Everybody who says yes stands up, goes over there, and everybody who says no stands up and goes over there. It's very effective. It's a big nuisance, because everybody's gotta move and nobody likes it. But I just wanted you to know that that method exists and is legitimate and legal.
Division of the house.
Okay, amazing.
Interesting visual.
Yes, I just wanted to, uh, speak to article three. I think everyone's aware that we did not have a quorum for some of the articles, the special town meeting. But it was nearly a three-to-one vote in the room to, to move this forward and approve it. And I just had one request that when the select board prepares this to send to the attorney general, that, that you put in a request that the gentleman that wrote this, Paul Terensis, be consulted and able to answer questions with the attorney general's office to clarify the intent of the article.
Okay, that request is, is made. I don't know that process, but John...
I'm sure they'll see his name somewhere along the lines of this. And anybody could...
Anybody can, can send an email or a memo or a letter to the Attorney General on any article and that will be taken into consideration in my experience.
So you might want to ask him to do that if that's.
I, I would, I would say however, that the Attorney General's review is quite limited. It's whether the bylaw is consistent with state law or not. Not whether it was a good idea, not whether the intent differed from what was voted. The standard is, is it consistent with state law?
Nothing to do with town code or sewer commissioner, just, just state law?
Well, state law includes the Nantucket Sewer Act.
Okay.
So it, you know, it has to be consistent with the special act that governs sewers and my email addressed all of those issues.
Pat.
Okay, I, I understand that anyone can send a letter and email and ask, but I'm just, please asking that the board requests that Paul Terence be able to work with or answer questions for, uh, the Attorney General's office when looking at this.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments on this agenda item, Libby, or the board? Could be, could be anything for special town meeting? So my takeaway is how to get more people here. Food trucks.
Yes.
Clickers and more bingo. Oh, sorry, Megan. I didn't see that.
Megan Perry, um, I just kind of wanted to follow up on Article Three and I'm, I'm hoping that you guys will see that the voters were very decisive in what they wanted and I'm hoping that you guys will help support sending Article Three to the Attorney General in any way and any capacity that you guys can. So that's my request of you guys.
I think it's going to Attorney General regardless, whether we support it or not.
Yes, it is, yes. Thank you.
Well, here, I, I've got to, I, I'm sorry, I have to speak. I, I under, I think I understand the intent of it, but, and, and I didn't vote for or against it because I had a feeling we were going to be in this quagmire when I read it and read it this, that first time and the third time and when it was changed. But I have a feeling, I, I think we could spend a lot of time, or we could waste a lot of time trying to get this to pass and try to do something that, that I think you guys intend, but it may not be the most effective way. I think that what might be more effective is taking direct action towards zoning and other issues at the regular town meeting. And so, and that doesn't require, you know, special legislation or, you know, all this kind of thing. That's a two-thirds vote at town meeting for some of the, you know, could directly do, I think, more quickly and efficiently what I feel like you're trying to do here. So that's, you know, that, that's, and, and I'm in favor of what you're trying to do. So, you know, that's, you know, this is coming from someone who I think is supportive, but I'm not necessarily supportive of this mechanism to achieve your goal.
And, and I definitely respect your opinion on that. I just am asking that the board send a positive motion towards the Attorney General of this.
Thanks, Megan. If there's nothing else, town managers report.
So I thought I would just review with you some upcoming agenda items and obviously there's been a little bit of change, um, from tonight. So on October 24th, we have next week, we have got public hearings. The big item next week is the review of the strategic planning framework with the Novak Group. And that, I think we want that to be our focus in next week's meeting, but we do have some other items on the agenda as well if you want to, um, I don't know if you want to move them out or not, but we do have some already scheduled real estate matters. The board recently asked for an update on the paid parking pilot program for 2019 and we combined that with the transportation planner coming in and reviewing the design for the pending three roundabout projects. And the traffic safety committee recently is, came up with some loading zone modification recommendations. There, I think there are four of them. We do have an executive session, as you know, on October 25th, no meeting on October 31st. November 7th, we have the DPW director giving a bike path safety report and some perhaps recommendations on there. Oh, I'm sorry, I forgot. Back to next week's meeting, October 24th, we'll add the Sagem's path waiver request and the revised waiver policy to that.
So I just had a question on the strategic planning framework review.
Yep.
So, uh, can you give me a little more, uh, you know, flesh meat on the bones about what that is? Will we be reviewing, uh, the status of our current strategic plan, accomplishments to date, projections on, you know, um, you know, meeting our goals for the future?
You're, you're going, there's a, um, document that will be in the packet that the Novak Group has prepared, which helps us, um, I think we've used this word before, operationalize the goals so that they are happening along with everybody's, you know, um, work. And it involves the, the, sort of a designation of a strategic planning coordinator and some other liaisons, both from the board and staff to keep the goals going. It involves timelines and, um, there's a, a letter from the chair as part of this advising the public what our strategic plan is all about, that, that kind of thing. But, but it will be.
So it's going to be tied specifically to our current strategic plan?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
If you want me to, well, I already, I already have the document that's going in the packet. I could send it out earlier. Okay. Okay, November 7th, uh, we're going to have cable TV license renewal status. As you may or may not recall, the cable TV, the existing cable TV license expires in 2019. We've, we've started the process, the, the renewal is a two-year process. We started it about a year ago and we're going to get a status report on that on November 7th. DPW Director and I have talked about putting forward to the board the request to adopt a map that would show which sidewalks are cleared of snow and ice by DPW when needed and everything that is not on that map is, are items that are not taken care of by DPW. First quarter budget reports for this current fiscal year, that, that's the first round of those budget reports. 2019 Fourth of July planning. And then I hope to have supplemental comment letters for the Surfside Crossing 40B as well as a draft comment letter regarding the potential modification of the proposal. November 14th, we have the remainder of the first quarter budget reports, the tax rate hearing for this fiscal year and an HDC appeal. This is, this is, and also, uh, back to November 7th, the marijuana RFQ. This is just, you know, pretty much what I think is going to be on there, but it may, it may change a little here and there. We have a few pending items. You're going to be having additional discussion about 2019 annual town meeting warrant articles. We are working internally on some recommendations for re, at least temporary reuse of the fire station once they move. And the marijuana licensing process and regulations, we already talked about it. We'll get going on that hopefully at your November 7th meeting.
Uh, so we discussed the map of the sidewalks. Could you also describe the obligations of the, of whoever's obligated to take care of the sidewalks? And like, there must be some, I, I kind of know what it is, I think, but if there's a kind of bylaw or something that's, that'd be helpful.
We, um, actually don't have a bylaw that requires people to.
Oh.
Do this.
So I don't have to, I don't have to shovel my sidewalk in front of my house?
Well, that's not what I said, but, um, you should.
I figured I'd be getting a ticket. I'm, I'm out there like at dawn every, every time it snows.
Keep at it, that's good to hear. Uh, but there are, I just, I can't remember right at this moment about, um, whether or not there's a general law that requires private property owners to clear the sidewalks of snow and ice.
If there's something, yeah, if people bring it up in that context, that'd be great.
It has to be a bylaw, okay. So we have talked about a bylaw here and so far we've never actually gone ahead with it because there was this discussion about, well, what if people aren't here and.
How do you enforce it?
How do you enforce it? So we decided to downgrade that a little bit and come up with this chart.
Maybe we don't want to talk about it. If everybody thinks that we're supposed to anyway.
How do you take care of the sidewalk when cars are parked all over them? I mean, there's a few other, are we responsible to fix that damage? Come on, so.
Is that all, Libby? Okay. Thank you for doing this. I think it's very helpful to the board and everyone to see what's coming up in the next two or three meetings. I know when I wasn't the chair or vice chair, it was always, some things were surprising and so this is really helpful, I think, to the, to the board looking forward.
Agreed.
So I switched to town manager report too fast. We'll go back to committee reports. Sorry about that. Or comments from the board. Jim?
I had a couple, um, on Saturday, I'm going to be attending the Mass Selectments Association Fall Leadership Conference in Devens. They've got a wide range of topics and, uh, and I'll be bringing back a report of those things, I think, that would be helpful to the board. I, uh, we've spoken to the, um, office, Dylan Fernanz's office. This is the issue that the Board of Health is talking about with, which is the, um, the carve-out that the State Cannabis Commission gave to Nantucket and the Vineyard for testing. And we've raised some concerns as a board about the things that aren't being tested for. And, uh, speaking to that, to Dylan's office, they're willing to set up a meeting or try to set up a meeting, uh, with Dylan and Julie and, and whoever, you know, from the Board of Health that wants to go, uh, to talk about our concerns. And in talking to Roberta this, this evening, we're going to collaborate with the Martha's Vineyard to see, uh, what their experiences are and how they're dealing with the concerns they may or may not have. I, I learned that there are five boards of health on the Vineyard, so, but I just wanted to make you all aware of that.
We finished our, um, sort of interviews with all the applicants at the CPC and there's some really, you know, great proposals this year. Unfortunately, their requests are almost $5 million, competing for about $2 million. So we're going to start figuring out what we can do next week in terms of grants.
Anybody else?
Today is the, uh, end of the public comment period for the Mass Pedestrian Transportation Plan. And that could, we got that through the MP and EDC. And a couple, it's interesting, that one of the first principle, treat people walking the same way we do people driving. For decades, transportation planning has prioritized automobile travel over all other modes. This orientation has led to transportation and land use decisions that focus on making driving more convenient and safer, offered at the expense of other travel modes, including walking, bicycling and transit. Mass DOT aims to update practices to provide the same care by implementing the initiatives in this plan. And then they talk about systemic safety improvements. And I wish I did, but, but isn't that, that is Nantucket. It's what, it's what we're dealing with. And the state is recognizing it. It's different than it is here. They're recognizing that there's no walkways and people can't get across these huge highways and everything else, like when you go to Hyannis and can't walk anywhere with, out taking your life into your own hands. The other, the principle too is, uh, focus on safety improvements rather than being fixed independent of other projects. Infrastructure deficiencies in pedestrian facilities such as crumbling sidewalks are typically handled as part of larger roadway projects. While it's important that we address these facilities as critical elements of larger transportation needs, attention to individual areas of projects is needed as well. And I thought that was interesting because that's what we're doing. We're working on our sidewalks that are most used and we have a sidewalk plan and we're working our way out. So I think that we're pretty good there. And number three for the state is lead by example and support municipalities. And I don't need you to read the rest, so.
Thank you. Rita, do you have anything?
Uh, my only comment, a couple people mentioned, uh, once they found out there was no quorum, that, um, they would have loved if there was some sort of texting mechanism just as a reminder. They said it came quickly, they were at work, et cetera. It was enough people. I know Libby had said that, that's something that's been somewhat discussed, but I like to go just back to that and say, I'd rather find a way to get more voters out. And if it's food trucks, texts, whatever it takes, signs. You had mentioned signs, wooden signs at the round, at the Rotary, things like that.
Yeah, so my idea was the, you know, the football sign that you see at the, at the fountain. I love that. It's like, oh, it's one, it's Friday and there's a game tonight at five.
Yeah.
And I, I can try to get to it. That really helps. So why can't we have a sign, very similar, that's wooden and everybody loves, high school kids can make it, DPW can make it, whoever, that says town meeting, Monday night, six, it's at the Rotary, you know, it's something very simple to just remind us.
Or we got that big rent aside that, you know, we put out the Rotary about street closures and, you know, we could put, put that up.
It's a big digital highway one?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Town meeting.
I was thinking something a little more, you know, handmade, wooden.
A little more historically prepared.
Yeah.
We, we've talked about this text alert thing and we, we are, we are working on it, we have been working on it. I, I personally have my doubts as to whether or not people really would have shown up if they got a text, but we did more public outreach for this town meeting than probably any town meeting we've done. We were at the Stop and Shop, we had, um, Florence was putting out constant Instagram stories and Twitter posts and, um, we, we had a newsletter, newsletters, we talked about it here, we went to a bunch of groups.
It was the, it was the most outreach we've ever done since I've been involved.
It seems like unless you are really passionate about the issue.
Unless you think it's going to directly affect you.
Don't show up.
It's unless your pocketbook is impacted, you, you aren't there. That's the, unfortunately, that's what our, you know, our island has kind of turned into.
Because everybody's pocketbook will be affected.
Well, it will be, but, but it will, it's not, are you getting an extra lot or are you getting raises for the next three months, you know, three years? You know, people show up for those things and they bring their whole neighborhood and they, you know? But something like this where you, oh, I'm going to.
I actually thought more people would show up to talk about marijuana.
I thought this was.
I really do.
I thought this was going to be packed. I thought from, you know, special, you know, the second one, I thought the, um, the gymnasium was going to be packed with people. I was worried we wouldn't have enough room. And I, it was the exact opposite.
I just want to put one more plug. I know we did a lot of reach, outreach and I, I do think the Stop and Shop was great, but I think it's possible to miss someone's social media, not be at Stop and Shop. And I will say, I forgot it was my rent day and it was my anniversary, but I remembered town meeting. So I think it's possible to have so many things going on that a text, I think even now people will say, people don't read emails anymore, they barely, well, a lot of people go on Facebook, I don't. But, um, texts are one of the best ways to get people out for anything. That's my only comment.
The Inky sent out texts.
The Inky sent out texts about town meeting?
You got to get people to sign up for the text alerts.
Yeah, I didn't get one.
It's not a bad idea. It's not going to hurt anything.
Yeah, so.
Thank you. Florence is saying the text alert will be up this Friday to sign up.
For all kinds of different text alerts.
So, yes, saying, thank you for mentioning that. So there are, you know, different ways to get the text out and we don't want to, well, people do, I guess, like to get texts about things, they don't like to get hundreds of texts about things. And every single time there's a town thing, they don't want to text about it. So we just, we'd be, you know, careful about what things we're texting out there. Town meeting is probably an important thing to text out and election is probably a good thing, but.
But there'll be options. So if you're in, if you're in, you want to watch the planning board, you get a text for planning board.
Right, but then you opt in to.
Right, you opt in to, like I, I get texts now with MPDTC because I forget when they, you know, just when the, um, packet goes out, I get a text, like, oh yeah, that's just coming Monday. So then I check it out. It's helpful, but it's going to be better, right? More options. Yeah. Great.
Can I clarify one thing? It might make me feel better. You forgot your own anniversary?
It was a close call. It was, it came quickly.
I hope Sheila is watching this. I hope she's watching it happens to other people, okay?
It does happen.
Mine's coming up and I get in big trouble almost every year.
I only, I had one, uh, meeting this week, NCTV 18. We mostly talked about the, the Comcast, you know, the renewal coming up. But they, just as a reminder, they have a new building that they purchased and it is on high ground and they don't get flooded all the time in the ear neck of the woods. And it's about a thousand-ish dollars more a month than what they were paying and they own, they own the building and, um, things are still looking good. Cash in the bank, but the next big thing is for this, this renewal, right? Because what Comcast is doing, we, that 3% that we all pay is only on the, the TV part. It's not on internet. And there's less and less people using television, rather than using Netflix, Hulu, whatever, in, in other ways. And so we, we're going to be asking probably. other ways. And so we, we're going to be asking probably for a 4% or 5% on that fee and capital improvements for some of their building to increase the programming for the kids. I'm really, what I'm trying to bring to the board is really push the programs for the kids to give somebody an opportunity to be interested in camera work, editing, you know, things that high school doesn't offer. So I think NCTV-18 can kind of supplement that a little bit. So it was, it was a good meeting. But we're having a, there's a lawyer coming to walk us through all of this. We have five months to figure this contract out with Comcast before it's out of our hands. So it'll, it'll come to this board. But it's out of our hands. And then it's the lawyer and Comcast negotiating. So we'll see that in five months. That's all I had. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. All's favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.